You got them Cumberland County now. At least it's not up loud though. You got, and it still does that on silence too.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the regular meeting one of the Swetara Township Board of Commissioners. It is seven o'clock. And it is May 7th, I'm gonna have everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America, and through a republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. You may be seated. Secretary Savage, could you do the roll call?
Commissioner Tuckey.
Here.
Commissioner Zubek.
Here.
Commissioner Connolly.
Here.
Vice President Steele.
Here.
President Ellis.
Here.
Madam President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, the board did have an executive session this evening to discuss personnel and potential litigation. We are up to item six, HRD discussion by our stormwater engineer, Mike Hess, with regard to the Highland Street bid for the Highland Street project.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. As you probably know, we opened bids for the Highland Street Drainage Improvement Project on April the 24th, which was the Thursday before last. Had kind of an unusual result in that we only received a single bid. We could see in the pen bid portal that a lot of contractors picked up the package, but only one of them ultimately submitted. That contractor was CPA Pavement Services, and their total bid price for the base bid and the alternate was $812,493.51. That's higher than the estimate. The estimate for the project was $620,038. So we were estimating in the low 600s, the bid, single bid, came in in the low 800s. We think that the bid came in higher because of a lack of competition. There was only one bidder. Typically, when you have multiple bidders, you have more competition, that drives down price, which is good for the buyer, which is in this case, Swetara Township. We reached out to a number of the contractors who didn't bid, who picked up the bid package, but didn't ultimately submit to ask what it was that prevented them from bidding, and got really two responses. Kind of the minor factor was just general economic uncertainty these days, but a lot of the materials that we use in the civil engineering world come from within 20 miles, they don't come from the other side of the world, you know, stone and asphalt and concrete is all pretty local in the first place. So that was, that was the minor factor. The bigger factor is just the challenge of building the work there over the summer while school's out. That's a pretty aggressive schedule for them to accommodate, but it's just kind of the nature of the beast based on where the project is and its proximity to Swetara Middle School. We hope that maybe when we got some of that feedback from the non-bidders, we could change something, you know, put it back out to bid and maybe get better prices, but there's really not anything we can change in this case. We do have to build it while school's out over the summertime, and that being the big factor, there's not really a way that we can change that. So if the, if we want to proceed with the project, and we're not asking for action tonight, I think we would ask for action next week, when the Stormwater Authority and the Commissioners meet. If we want to move forward with the project, we would request awarding the bid to CPA Pavement Services in their amount of $812,493.51. If we want to control that cost a little bit, get it back closer to what the estimate was, we can omit the bid alternate, which is the Church Street Extension. So we would get the drainage off of Highland Street, and we would daylight it back into the stream, that's kind of on the lower side of the wall there, but we wouldn't carry it farther downstream beyond Church Street. If we eliminate that portion of the work, and just get, award the base bid, then we have a price of $672,447.63, which is a lot closer to the 620 estimate. So there is an option there. Unfortunately, there's not an option to work with different contractors, because we only received a single bid, and we would have to award it to the lowest bid anyway. So that's the result that we got, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Does anyone have anything at this time?
If you cut some of the work out of the project to get the lower price, is that something we're gonna have to do anyway?
It is, but if we went and did that work another time as a separate standalone project, that would be decoupled from the school schedule, because that's not on the bus route. But I think that it is something that would have to be done at some point anyway. I mean, we would end up with a situation where we have a big pipe flowing into a small pipe, and that's no good, because the small pipe's not gonna have the capacity. So something that we would have to address, and probably sooner than later. We may also, even though we decouple it from the school schedule, see a higher price on that portion as a standalone job, just because it's a smaller job.
Unfortunately, costs on anything anymore, it's not gonna really go down. So, that's something to really think about.
Yeah, we have seen bid prices go up across the board here a little bit this year, as we get into construction season, we're opening a lot of bids usually in the spring, and we're seeing them tick up, as they tend to tick up every year, just due to inflation and that sort of stuff. A little bit more so this year with the economic uncertainty, but as I said earlier, that's kind of a minor effect, just because of the nature of the work and the short supply chain that concrete, stone, asphalt, sand, those sorts of things have.
So is there a possibility, I'm a bit more of a visual person, is there a possibility that I could get like a list of what the $800,000 project is versus the $600,000? Because I think that would help me to know how much more work needs to be done for additional 200,000, and what is the impact of not doing the project in total?
We would probably end up with a situation where Church Street floods, where we would basically move the flooding from Highland Street to Church Street. So we would want to address it at some point, you know, in the near future. But as far as, you know, a graphical representation of what each portion of it is, we can certainly do that. It really is just, we do this area and this area, we can draw a line around it on the plan to make it clear.
So if we don't do it, there will be flooding?
When it rains, the downstream system probably wouldn't have capacity to carry what the new, larger upstream system now can. So we would build the upstream portion, but not the downstream portion, and that would lead to some problems, you know, at that downstream portion, until that next project comes along to fix it.
Does that impact any of our residents?
I think it probably would.
Their homes down there, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a very good chance of it would.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think I would want to do half a project and have flooding into residential areas.
Yeah. I think if we do the base bid and the alternate, we solve the problem. If we do the base bid, but not the alternate, we just move the problem.
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah. All right, thank you.
I don't have anything else, that's, in the next week, we'll have a conversation with Kevin, and then you'll be back in front of us next week anyway, so.
We can do that.
We'll get that information as far as the visuals and things like that, and go more in depth into the discussion.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep, thank you. All right, we're up to item seven, visitors' requests and comments. This is gonna be limited to 30 minutes. You can come forward, state your name and address, as well as write your name and address down for record-keeping purposes, and then you may begin, and I'll just remind everyone to try to keep it to three minutes.
My name is Joanne Seibert, 799 High Street, in the beautiful village of Bressler. I gave you guys up for Lent. Craziness of these meetings or the reverence of a church, it was an easy choice, but now I'm back. I have to get caught up with this golf course sale and the data center, which was brewing when I last left, and it was brewing when, and I dropped out of my, the concern of public issues in favor of my spiritual life. Again, I feel it will go the same way as the drug rehab center. There you had a public meeting, and the residents and businesses came out and forced against it. You let the frenzy die down, and then brought it back up and quickly passed it. Same concerns from the residents, but a 3-2 vote for it was inevitable. I feel this is gonna be probably the same thing if this proceeds. Your solicitor didn't, doesn't have a problem with this issue, because, just like it didn't, he didn't have an issue with the rehab center, with it because you don't have a problem with it. Your zoning officer didn't have a problem with it because you don't have a problem with it. All you see are the Benjamins, and your eyes glaze over when you, when the concern of the residents go out the window. I went to the meeting at the golf course, I was 10 minutes late, and as I was walking to the meeting, people were leaving. They said the meeting lasted 10 minutes, and they said nothing. That is a red flag. Who are the, who are, who are in favor of this? Those who will benefit financially from it. For one, the school district at the meeting was giddy over the possibility of getting an increased tax base without having to do anything. So I checked in, and according to the NISH ranking, this, this district ranks 121 in the state. Then I looked at my local elementary school, tri-community. Teacher ratio is three to one, but according to test scores, 23% of the students are at, at least proficient in math, and 32% in reading. Will throwing more money at the issue be a solution? I doubt it. The only A-plus rating it got was in diversity. Overall, its niche, its niche grade was C+. But then, that seems to be the solution you have for anything. Just throw money at the problem and it will go away. Wrong, as usual. Thank you. Thank you.
Deborah Knowles, 6080 Hocker Drive. I'm still waiting to see a published Attorney General's Investigation Report on the, the Bressler Fire Company. Has anyone heard anything?
No, not at this time. I reached out, oh, I don't know when, I can look it up, and I got no response, so.
Okay, we're still looking for it.
Madam President.
Yes.
I'd like to request to reach out to him again.
That's fine, I'll look and see when it was and follow up on that, you know.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mary Klaus, 447 Pritchard Court in Chambers Hill. Three things. I just returned from Gambia in West Africa, where I took the proclamation from Swetara Township, and I wanted to tell you how well it was received. So I worked with an optometrist in a village, and he was the one that we were honoring, Dr. Simon Mendy. And there's, it's a very holy kind of mission, so we do a lot of work, but there's also church along the way. And the first church service, at the end of the service, they were having, matching the translators with the, with the medical team people. So it was the beginning of that meeting, I'd asked to make a presentation, and I, they never heard of Pennsylvania, much less Dauphin County Swetara Township, to be honest. But I just said it was from my government back home, my local government, and when I started to read it and said his name, his eyes got big, and then it got filled with tears, he was deeply moved. We had him come up, and I presented the township proclamation to him. I'm sorry, I didn't have someone take a picture, just I was busy with that, but he was really moved, and he came back to his seat in the church, and I snuck a peek, and he was, had tears, and he was wiping his eyes. So it was a very good thing we did, it didn't cost us anything, but it was a thank you to an optometrist, who gives so much of himself. During the course of the mission, Dr. Mendy and I took care of 676 people, and I was able to take some equipment that the Pennsylvania Optometric Association bought. We had some amazing discoveries, sadly, we found some glaucoma in people, and I just hope they can afford the medicine, because glaucoma causes blindness if you can't. We found why some of the people are blind, because they had advanced glaucoma, and it's , it was a sad thing, but it was a good, it was a good thing to do, to do the proclamation, and thank you for doing that. Second thing is, this Saturday is the Chambers Hill Fire Company's kickoff of our chicken barbecue season, our kicking chicken, and we will start selling at 10:30. We buy, we bought over 450 chickens, and, half chickens, and we have potatoes and corn with it, and we kept our price the same, $10. And it's a drive-through event, it's pretty popular, so we'd invite everyone to come for some chicken. And finally, thank you so much for fixing that light. We're not getting dizzy. While we sometimes get dizzy at these meetings, we're not getting dizzy because of that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Zell Loftus, 5631 Plainview Drive. Just as an update, I have been canvassing the neighborhoods of Bressler, Oberlin, and Hot, Rainbow Hills, Oberlin Gardens, and talking to people, and thus far, I've found nobody who wants the data center project. Nobody. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Do we have any other visitors' requests and comments at this time? All right. We're gonna go ahead and move on then, we're up to item eight, a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
You have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do you have any discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda's approved, we're up to item nine, a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
Motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, we'll go ahead and open it up for discussion.
Madam President.
Yep.
Per our earlier conversation, I would like to request that we go over just the new hires until we have an opportunity to look over resumes, and hold over until next week.
I just want to.
Is that an issue with any of the department heads?
As far as holding off on, on the hiring?
The new hires, till we had the resumes.
To defer to. Will that impact anything?
Oh, I understand, but the public works.
And Kevin's not here to ask of that one. What if we amend the motion to say that it's conditional pending review?
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not amending my motion. The individuals, including the police officers, were vetted by the HR. Our process is, we hired an HR manager, and HR manager advertises jobs, whether it be for police or public works, and that individual is responsible for vetting the candidates and picking the candidate for us, and then bringing it forth to this Board of Commissioners. We hired a highly qualified HR person, as you as the vice chair of the Joint Personnel Committee. I trust our HR staff that, and, and our crew leader, excuse me, not our crew leader, but our manager of utilities, and the superintendent who picked these individuals, vetted them, and interviewed them, that we can move forward, and I'm confident that we can move forward with these individuals. So at this time, I'm not amenable to amending my motion to wait on some resumes. I think that's too much down into the weeds for me. Again, we have the professional staff to vet the qualified candidates, and I trusted our staff's doing the right job.
The only thing that I'll say is, to my knowledge, there were only three individuals that were interviewed for the public works. I don't know, obviously, I don't know the process for the police.
Well, I, I just think, yeah, you're right.
But I just want to say that two, obviously, two of the three were selected, but I, yeah, so.
With, with all due respect, the HR manager, this is the first hires that, that individual's had, this board has always reviewed resumes. I understand that we trust our staff to do the interviews to get us to this point, but it is ultimately the decision of the board to hire individuals, and I, I would personally, as a member of this board, prefer to see a resume before I've voted to hire someone. So while I understand that, you know, Commissioner Steele does not want to amend his motion, that's fine, but I think it's a little disingenuous of him to say that we don't have a right as members of the board to review resumes before we make a final determination.
Just so we're clear, that wasn't my comment.
That was your comment.
I didn't say you didn't have a right to, I said, I chose not to.
You said you would not amend your motion.
I'm just gonna say too, that at this point, generally, the way that this has worked in the past, which you're, you're right, we have had resumes in the past as part of the packet that we get, and I've already said, I apologize for the oversight, that wasn't something, it doesn't matter to me, I trust the staff to make the decisions, and then give it back to us, because that's generally how it's been anyway. The resume was just something that was like informational, it wasn't that we selected them, so.
No, I understand, but we did decide whether or not we wanted to vote on them, but I, I would, I would go this.
But if only, like, if we were hiring one person, there would be a process that took place outside of this board, by them, and then the resume would just be included.
Well, we've also had executive sessions in the past to discuss the hiring of those individuals, but in any case.
There was only one, and it was, we talked about, that was for a department head, it wasn't, it was never for individuals for public works.
In any case, if he doesn't want to amend his motion, that's fine, but I would like to see a resume as soon as possible.
And as, again, for the board, this was briefly discussed within the executive session, but what I did, what I've already done, is email the HR representative, which she was here, but she left by the time this came up, and I've copied all of the Commissioners on it, and I requested resumes for the individual. So it will be provided, it's just, she's not here right now, she already left when it, when it was brought up, so.
Thank you.
Yep, and then, like I said to you, I will do my best to remember going forward, that if there's a hire, and it's something that has a resume, we can put it in the packet.
Thank you.
Yep.
Madam President, if I may, just, just so we're clear here, I think the board needs to look in a different direction, and, and just because we've done something consistently the same way in the past, doesn't mean we need to continue. We're executives of this municipality, and we, we govern at a higher level, not into the weeds of the HR manager. So just so we're clear, the way, you know, an organization works, you, you would normally have an HR vet the candidate for the qualifications, and then you would make the higher-level decisions based upon what that HR rep would say, and, and I think at, at some point in time, this board should not be in the weeds any longer, and I get that was the practice before, and, and I fully understand that. Now, I think when it comes to department heads, like, the Personnel Committee set up a executive session, interview session for the directors. I, I, I agree with Commissioner Zubek, to the point where, when you're hiring a director, I, I think that is going to be directly reflected of our governance. I'm all in favor of executive session and. and us actually interviewing that candidate. I'm fine with that. I trust, again, you know, Mr. Trafka. I trust the HR rep, Ms. Fink, to bring qualified candidates before this board, that we can make the high-level decisions and hire and get these people on board. And I'm going to say this. You know, I think we can't separate Public Works from PD, from our other departments on pick and choose and who we're going to get resumes from. It's either we're going to get resumes from everyone or we're not going to get resumes at all. And, you know, these three police hires, if we would not actually get their resumes tonight, these three good individuals could actually end up going somewhere else.
They don't have resumes. We've already established that.
Please don't interrupt me.
Okay.
I'm asking you not to interrupt me.
They don't have resumes. We've already established that.
And that goes to my point where, if we're going to require Public Works employees to have resumes, we're going to require everyone to have resumes. We're not going to single out just certain departments that you come with resumes to this board. So if your process, if you want it to be, and we can go to Ms. Fink, who is the HR manager, if you want everyone to submit a resume, fine. I just disagree with that. I'll let her do her job, and we'll work from there. And that's all I have for the comments of that.
I don't really understand where you're able to come in. And we've always looked at resumes before, and you have the nerve to say that I'm in the weeds when you've been in the weeds by yourself for an entire year and a half. And all I'm asking for is transparency. And if I'm going to sit up here and vote on a new hire, I think it's only right that the Board of Commissioners, all of us, I'm not asking for special treatment, be able to review a resume before we hire someone that represents this township and is in the public eye. It's not a matter of me trying to take any control away from you. All I want to see is a resume. That's not asking a lot. And I understand that we haven't done it for police in the past. That's fine. I'm not asking for anything different. I understand we hired an HR person. I think that's great. It doesn't mean we don't still have to make a determination as a board. We are the ones that make the decisions, and I have no problem doing that. But I'm asking for transparency, and I think that the residents would prefer it if we were able to see those final determinations for ourselves to ensure, you know, that we're making the right decision. Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Tuckey.
Yeah, I would agree with Commissioner Zubek. If it was prior information that we received before, it's the way it should be now. More transparency, as far as I'm concerned, the better with everything. I don't think it's going into the weeds. I think what, there was a reason in the past why it was done that way, and I believe it should be consistent and keep moving on like it was. And there's reasons for that. And being board members up here, we should be knowledgeable in everything that we go and vote on before we take that vote. Thank you.
I have a discussion. When I served on the board before, I was the president of the board, and we hired Public Works. Both Commissioner Zubek to my right and Commissioner Ellis to my left oversaw Public Works, and they hired people. And as the president of the board, I know they submitted resumes, and they went through a hiring process, and they were selected, and they were great employees. But I'll tell you this, I never saw their resumes. And this particular job posting, I believe there was well over 100 people that submitted resumes. It went through the hiring process of an HR department here, and then it was set up with an interview panel. And the person who is in charge of the Highway Department of Public Works, Kevin Trafka, Natalie Blackman, the chief of staff, and the new HR hire, went through the process and got it down to the people that they thought rose to the top on a lot of criteria. I personally don't feel that, you know, I need to see the resume. We're going to offer conditional employment tonight to three police officers. Chief Staffer is the third police chief that I worked with. We've hired many police officers during that year stint, and now we're hiring again tonight, we hired before. I never saw a resume. I thought there was some, you know, sense of confidentiality, that they went through this process of employment. And sometimes you have to remember, we're going to make these offers, and these people might have already taken another job. At that point, what business do we have knowing about their past? But I do trust the process. And I also understand that Commissioner Zubek, when she was hiring for Public Works, probably saw lots of resumes and selected the good candidates from that. But I honestly don't know that, as a rule, throughout, you know, just say the last 10 years, that at this point, after going through the entire process of hiring for the township, where there's 110 to 12 employees, that this level of the board really would be reviewing resumes other than personal interest to see that we got a qualified candidate. But I trust our staff overall to make those decisions and send the recommendations to us.
What the process will be, but go ahead.
I am not asking for participation in the hiring process. I am simply asking to review the final resume of the selected candidate for the position. And we have done that in the past. And I distinctly remember bringing department head into executive sessions to talk about the new hire on Public Works. And so all I'm asking for, I'm not asking for the technicalities or, you know, what happened over the last 10 years. I'm just asking for the final candidate's resume. And I don't know why we have to have a 15-minute conversation on whether or not a board member up here has a right to look at a resume. I'm not putting it on Facebook. I'm not showing it to the entire world. I'm looking at a resume as per our job responsibilities, and it has nothing to do with confidentiality. We go over personnel matters all the time, and we keep them confidential. We're sworn to confidentiality. I can be trusted just as good, you know, like the next person when it comes to that. And we're not talking about police. I understand that that's different. So I'm not sure why we're arguing over something as simple as just put the resume in a packet or if you don't want me to have it in the packet because you're worried that I'm going to share it, I'll come to your office and look at the resume. But I do care about the decisions that we're making, and it's not in the weeds to want to know what's going on and be part of the process. Thank you.
So again, I'm going to try to mediate this. We have had resumes included in the package before for Public Works employees, as I said. And we didn't this time. That was something that was overlooked. I won't even say overlooked. It just wasn't something that was a thought, frankly, until we came in this evening. So as I said, we'll get that out to everyone. But the point, the only point that I want to make is, when it got to this point where it was on the agenda, it was just information only, essentially. So I think we should move forward, because obviously, they were vetted by HR and by Public Works, but you will get the information.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
So that's all I got.
Thank you, Madam President.
Yep, okay. So do we have any further discussion with regard to the consent agenda? Thank you, Jen. All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we're going to go ahead and move on. And as I said, I sent that email. That'll get sent tomorrow when HR is in.
Much appreciated.
Yep. So now we're up to item 10, consideration of minutes. We have the April 2nd minutes, as well as the April 9th minutes. And I will entertain a motion. You can do them individually. You can do them together. It doesn't matter to me.
Motion approved, 10A and 10B. Second.
All right, do we have any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. We're up to item 11, subdivision and land development plans. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our Director of Planning and Zoning, Mr. Golden.
All right, thank you, Madam President. This is the minor subdivision plan for Cloverleaf Motel Incorporated. They are located just right up the road here at 631 Eisenhower Boulevard in the zoning district of Limited Commercial. The proposed project consists of subdividing one 2.6 approximate acre lot into two separate lots. Proposed Lot 1 would consist of 1.3 approximate acres. Lot 2 would consist of 1.4 approximate acres. As you can see on your screen, I guess it's going to take a couple minutes to load. There we go. The existing one-story building, which is the prior roadway inn, would remain on proposed Lot 1. And the existing four-story building, Sleep-In, would remain on proposed Lot 2. We did have Tri-County Regional Planning Commission review and provide comments as required. On January 10th, all of our departments reviewed the plan, provided comments. They are requesting one modification of, and one waiver. The waiver would be the typical, provide a 1 inch equals 100 foot instead of providing a 1 inch at 30-foot scale. Staff did not have any objections with that. However, it should be a modification instead of a waiver. And also, the waiver request of 25311 to submit a separate preliminary plan is very common. Staff does not object to this waiver, as it is a minor subdivision. The Township Planning Commission met on March 4th and recommended approval of the waiver, the modification, and the plan with the same conditions as mentioned in your staff memo. We are recommending approval of the plan with the seven conditions as outlined in your staff memo. Also, Greg Holtzman is here from BL Company, which I'm sure he'll want to provide some more details on the plan itself.
All right, thank you. Greg Holtzman from BL Companies, Senior Project Manager. So Zach took most of my thunder there. He hit all the highlights. I think the only thing here to note is, again, we're about 300-some feet south. It's the motel and the sleep-in. We're looking to subdivide it. It's right down the middle. We've received comments. We've worked with staff. We're committed to making improvements. One of the most notable was probably the sidewalk, which is going to complete the vision here for Eisenhower. So I think that's a great improvement. We're also going to be upgrading some just minor striping signage, just things here to button it up. And with that, I'd like to open up to questions and comments.
The only thing I'm going to say is, can you write your name down on there? So it'll help our, that'll help our secretary, so... But then, if anyone else has any questions or anything like that at this time, feel free. Yep, go ahead.
Zach, was there a waiver for the sidewalks? I thought I seen that in the packet. Was there, were you requesting a waiver for the sidewalks?
One of them had fee and lieu.
No, so they will be providing sidewalks along Eisenhower, and then they'll be providing the fee and lieu of along Cloverleaf.
Makes sense, okay, yeah, okay. And I think that was discussed in the PC meeting. My one last comment, because I didn't get to see, I see sewer did weigh in. And I think there was a, with the subdivision of the two lots, there was a, and correct me if I'm wrong, one section was to be capped, and then the other current section that would still be maintained, actually still occupied, they would reroute the sewer line. Has that been agreed upon?
Exactly, yeah, you're exactly right.
And I appreciate you, because I remember you talking a lot at the PC meeting and, you know, doing your due diligence to put the sidewalk in. I was just, I thought I caught one, but it makes sense not on Clover. And I remember your comment about the sidewalks going up the rest of Eisenhower, and you wanted to be a good steward with us and put extra sidewalks in to make that connection that the states here already help us do on Eisenhower. So I appreciate you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything?
I just want to say one last thing to Zach, too. I do like the comments, the way you did the form. I know it has to do with this, but I do like that. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thanks on the sidewalk thing. I mean, normally, I mean, I think we all know that right off the bat, when there's development, we're told that no one's ever going to walk to our business, our hotel. And you did a great job. And just for the public, this isn't the first time where you stepped up on a project and really surprised us. You know, and you probably work for a different client, but on the J.B. Hunt property, to agree to provide trees and shrubs for one of our parks when you would have loved to have used it on your property, but because of the nature of the property, and it just wasn't available. So that's a couple good things that really surprised me. And I think when you come to the Planning Commission meetings now, that's refreshing. And I think, I mean, specifically about you, but we're starting to see some reasonable approach to protecting people around the projects rather than before. It was always just about the project and minimizing costs. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Well, you prompt us for what the motion should be for modification and waivers.
So it would move to approve a modification of the requirements of 25310A1B5 to provide a 1 inch equals 100 foot instead of a 1 inch equals 30 foot.
Just go ahead and run through all of them, and then one...
Oh, sure.
Make one motion.
Yeah, do it all together.
And then move to approve a waiver of the requirement of 25311 to submit a separate preliminary plan. Move to approve the minor subdivision plan for the Cloverleaf Motel Incorporated with seven conditions as outlined in staff's memo dated April 25, 2025.
All right. Would anyone like to make that motion?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion at this time? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Those are all approved. And then we have consideration of the resolution.
Motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, so it's going to be a resolution R dash 2025 dash 35. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time.
Yep. Thirty-five. All right, and then you can go right into the next one.
Yep, this is, uh, plan name 6121 Leon Avenue. It's a minor subdivision plan at 6121 Leon Avenue, uh, in the single-family residential RS zoning district. The proposed project consists of subdividing two existing lots. One is 0.57 acres, the other is 16.59 acres into three, three separate lots for the purpose of constructing a single-family dwelling. Lot one will consist of a 2.1 approximate acre, acres in the proposed single-family dwelling. Lot two will consist of 6.3 approximate acres and an existing single-family dwelling. And lot three will consist of the remainder 8.6 approximate acres. The proposed dwelling and infiltration basin will be located within Swatera Township. Uh, and the septic system driveway and partial vegetated swill will be in Swatera Township. Therefore, approval of both municipalities are required. Uh, just as informational purposes, Lower Swatera will be handling the stormwater maintenance operations, maintenance agreements. Um, and, um, we will be handling a little bit of the finance security for grading. Um, however, Lower Swatera will take control of that. Um, the planning commission or the staff reviewed this, provided their comments. Uh, they are requesting a one waiver and one deferral. The waiver is 253 11 to submit a separate preliminary plan. We do not object to this as it qualifies for a minor subdivision plan. And also a deferral of the requirements of 253 32 to install sidewalks, pedestrian walkways, and bicycle paths. Staff do not object to this deferral request as sidewalks, walkways, and bicycle paths do not currently exist in that surrounding neighborhood. Tri-County did provide their submission of comments as required. On February 24th, the township planning commission met on April 1st and recommended approval of the waiver, the deferral, and the plan with the same conditions as mentioned in your staff memo. Um, we are recommending approval of the plan with the 11, uh, comments or conditions as outlined in your review memo. Um, I believe there are representatives here in order to discuss the plan.
Good evening, Connor Surgeon with Highland Engineering. I am here on behalf of the owner, Jared Spencer. Uh, just to kind of go over the plan again, Zach did a good job. But we are taking two existing lots that Jared owns subdividing into three separate lots. Lot number one is mainly what is shown here with the improvements to be a single-family residence. Uh, driveway, house, and all-mot septic sewer. The all-mot will be within Swatera Township. We have submitted our sewage planning, um, and conducted the testing on site. The stormwater management is located within Lower Swatera Township. We've been in front of them and received, uh, PC approval. We will be going in two weeks for their board of commissioners to seek their approval. Lot number two is going to be Jared's existing home, continue functioning as it is today with no improvements. Lot number three is on the bottom of the page there. Uh, Laurel Ronne Stream kind of splits the two different sides there. That is going to remain a residual undeveloped lot, um, with access to be provided off Cockley Road. If you have any questions on the plan, I'd be happy to answer them.
I, I have one question.
Just, I'm going to have you do the same thing with your name. If you could write it down, that'll help the secretary, but then go right ahead.
Thank you.
Yes.
So just to clarify, the newly constructed residence is in Lower Swatera Township? And then the underground infrastructure is in Swatera Township?
So all the improvements except for the driveway and the all-mot septic field are in Lower Swatera Township. So we will get a driveway permit through Swatera Township and the all-mot septic approval through Swatera Township. Everything else is being handled through Lower Swatera.
Got it, okay, thank you.
So I assume they'll be part of our olds program for.
Correct.
Do we have any other questions or discussion or anything like that at this time? All right, well then I'll let you go ahead and outline the motions again.
Yep, so, uh, move to approve a waiver of the requirement of 253 11 to submit a separate preliminary plan. Move to approve a deferral of the requirements of 253 32 to install sidewalks, pedestrian walkways, and bicycle paths. And move to approve the minor subdivision plan for 6121 Leon Avenue with the conditions, 11 conditions as outlined in staff memo dated April 25th, 2025.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Do we have any further discussion at this time? All right.
I do have a question. So, um, at the same time you're meeting at, at Lower Swatera on the same, same plan, planning commission and.
Correct.
Because I've been here for a planning commission and I, I was wondering that.
Yeah, we've gone through the same exact plan you're saying.
Any conflicts with the meetings being the same night or anything like that?
Say again?
Were there any conflicts with the meetings being on the same?
You guys were separate somehow.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Because we, we hear that sometimes from, uh, cross-border. And we have, we have a situation now where somebody's looking to develop Lower Paxton and then across into Swatera. And there's been times where they had to send a representative or they couldn't.
I haven't run into that yet, luckily.
All right, well, we're on a good schedule with Lower Swatera. It's Lower Paxton that we have the issue with.
Yeah, it's not, not Lower Swatera.
But, and I think you've represented your client well.
Thank you.
At the planning commission?
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to have Secretary, does anyone else have anything further at this time? No, I'm going to have Secretary Savage do a roll call vote. Commissioner Taki?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubek?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Vice President Steele?
Abstaining.
President Ellis?
Yes.
All right, so that is approved with one abstention.
Thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you. And, uh, we have the resolution. So is it, would anyone entertain a motion for the resolution that goes along with?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution that went along with, that we just did.
Okay, and we have a second. All right, any discussion? Um, we'll do roll call vote again. Commissioner Taki?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubek?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Vice President Steele?
Abstaining.
President Ellis?
Yes.
All right, so that is going to be resolution R dash 2025 dash 36, and that is approved with one abstention as well. All right.
So we received a request from Exter, Swatera Exchange. Uh, as you probably remember, they were before the board not too long ago and they had their plan approved for the Harrisburg Mall project. They are seeking a multimodal transportation fund, uh, program grant. Uh, they're requesting 2.65 million. The total project costs are estimated at about 5.3 million. It's my understanding that the board has, uh, requested or, um, approved a similar request at their last year's meeting. And they, I believe they did receive over $300,000 towards the grant or approximate. So they're seeking more funds in order to improve, um, their sidewalks, curbs, gutters, everything along 83. So this is just a letter of support.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion a second, do we have any discussion at this time?
Um, yeah, for a discussion, uh, the, we're, we're supporting them for this, this pot of money, um, which is very similar to, um, the center of town in some places. They, they're, they're going to be able to get financial help from, um, the state and other sources. And, uh, it's such a massive project lining it up with the new highway construction. Um, one of, one of the, uh, the big improvements that we're going to see there is, um, uh, sidewalk from, uh, Mall Road all, all the way down to, uh, 441, um, Harrisburg Street. And then also sidewalk across the front, which is, is kind of amazing because it's a redevelopment project, not a new project. And, um, they're actually coming back to us with improvements that, um, probably we would have liked to have seen there for 30 or 40 years. Uh, because of the, the same situation, we see that there's, uh, a lot more pedestrian traffic. And I just want to wrap up by saying, uh, we have sidewalk from 28th Street, the district magistrate office across, uh, an auto parts business, Turkey Hill, uh, McDonald's. A county grant was used to, to link to the Green Belt, um, the Tony Spagnolo Way section of the Green Belt. And now we're looking at, um, getting sidewalk on that Pizza Hut corner wrapped around with pedestrian crossing there. This apartment building across the street and sidewalk all the way down to Sheets. So, um, for many years, uh, we, we had issues there. And that corridor, uh, Chief Stauffer knows, was, was a, a high, um, accident corridor for motor vehicle accidents. But we've also had issues with pedestrians and, and bicycles there. So, uh, it's, it's a big change and we appreciate, uh, the, the mall project, um, for, for adding to it and looking out for the residents. And I think that's going to be a common theme, um, throughout the township. Any place that we can get sidewalks in to help with the pedestrian traffic, um, we're going to do it. So, uh, I, I think it's a, it's a great letter of support. Hopefully they get the money. And, um, I saw that there were some similar style, um, uh, attempts to get money around the Conio Park Mall. So, uh, we don't really have a downtown or a town hall, but the, the mall is pretty much central, um, for, for our business district. So appreciate the work on that. And, uh, we did support them before and you're correct, they did, they did get some funds, so hopefully they will again. Thank you.
Do we have any further discussion at this time? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the board has approved that letter of support. Got one more item?
Sure, yeah, so, uh, the Commissioner Connolly and I continue to work together to try to improve efficiencies, effectiveness of the township, especially my department. Um, this is under my department's agenda item tonight. However, we've worked with all the departments, the police department, um, we talked to the fire department, the finance department on a new fees resolution. Um, just wanted to kind of go over briefly some of the changes. Uh, for example, uh, building permits, um, we use a third-party approved code services. And one thing I did was I, I worked with approved codes to determine, you know, what are we getting charged? Or what are we charging our businesses, our residents, our applicants? And, uh, found that the township is losing thousands of dollars, um, every year on not collecting enough fees. So I know one thing that planning directors do across the state, across the country is, is try to ensure that neighbors aren't paying for other neighbors, like, you know, $100,000 swimming pools or, uh, any kind of property improvements. We want to make sure it's equitable, people pay for their own projects. Um, so we work with them to break even. So we'll be breaking even on building permits, um, to ensure the taxpayers aren't losing, um, funds. Also, we added engineering and staff fee, um, charges. So when we do review plans, the department heads, uh, just as typical for other municipalities, we can now charge, uh, for our time. Uh, Ms. Lanning has permit applications and other requests. I work with Kevin Traska on the street cut permits in particular. Uh, one thing, um, municipalities are going towards now is trying to limit or significantly reduce the amount of cuts into our brand-new streets. So a lot of the fee schedules are, um, increasing fees on streets that are five years and newer to try to, uh, limit that cost. Because anytime you cut into a street, it's a failure on that street. So, uh, to try to recoup the cost for us to maintain it later down the road when the seals crack and everything else, we, we up the, the permit fees a little bit. Um, under municipal collections, I worked with our township solicitor, uh, to update all of those fees. So when we do have to go to the different magistrates and everything for rits and different things, we're, we're breaking even and we're not losing money on those. Continuing on, all-mot sewage disposal systems, I work with our sewage enforcement officer to ensure that we were breaking even on our olds program. I included the park and recreation, didn't make any changes to that for the key rentals and everything. Right-to-know, right-to-know law, this comes directly from the right-to-know law of the state level. So we just put that into our fees resolution as other municipalities do, just so, um, everyone's aware of what we charge. The police department, I worked with, um, Superintendent, uh, Stauffer. And, um, one thing I noticed at Dairy Township and other municipalities now is there's heavy requests for police body camera. Um, I know a lot of the time, um, Sergeant, um, Balua, Ashley spends the vast majority of her time reviewing body camera footage. And Act 22 actually allows municipalities to recoup those costs to a certain extent. So worked with Tom and we found a, um, a good number to help offset the, the cost of the taxpayer for that. Subdivision land development amendments, um, subdivision land development and amendments. I looked at adjoining municipalities to ensure that we're charging, um, our fair share and make sure that we're, are covering all of our costs because it takes a lot of staff time. Um, not just myself, but all the department heads review subdivision land developments and amendments. So, um, we updated the escrow. Commissioner Steele, I don't know if you want to talk about the escrow accounts, but I work with Commissioner Steele. We have a ton of escrow accounts and Commissioner Steele, you can probably talk about it better than I can. The amount of time that the finance department and Commissioner Steele spend trying to collect the outstanding debts and everything. Um, so we, we updated that to make sure that, um, all escrow accounts maintain a $1,000 minimum balance at all times. We also added an escrow account administration fee, which a lot of municipalities are going towards because finance director, our finance director, um, spends a significant amount of time, uh, billing, um, sending out postage or for postage, sending out mailings. So this would recoup, it's a yearly fee of $100 per escrow count and now help the township recoup some of those fees. Um, stormwater management plans, uh, we updated that. The, the permits, we have a minor stormwater permit, major stormwater permit, and we now have, or we, we also have a stormwater permit escrow. I worked with the manager utilities to ensure we were charging, um, significant, or, uh, not significant, but charging enough to recoup our fees for that. And we also increased the stormwater permit escrow as engineering fees have increased, so we have to, uh, keep a minimum balance there. Wireless communication facilities, these are cell towers. The tower base, the non-tower base, that's a new fee, other municipalities charge those. However, um, that would, it's, it takes a significant amount of time to review cell tower applications. So that just helps us recoup that. The small WCF, um, they are actually, uh, we had a resolution, I guess the board passed, I think it was in 2022, a small wireless communication facilities ordinance. So those fees were just brought over into our fees resolution, so it's all in one, um, one place. Zoning hearing board, we just increased those, uh, fees slightly just to help recoup those costs. And zoning permits, we only increased those by $10. It typically takes me about an hour to review each zoning permit. And also we have to recoup the time that our, um, assistant zoning officer, uh, enters it into our permitting software. So it's just, it, it does take time. But we still are at a good rate compared to neighboring municipalities. I did add, which we did not have in the past, uh, floodplain development permit application fee. It's a significant time, our engineer has to review it. So we did, um, add an escrow along that as well with the floodplain appeal and a variance application fee as well. As that takes a significant amount of time. That's all I have, Madam President. If there's any questions, I can try to answer them.
Yep.
Yeah.
Go ahead and.
Some questions, um. So I, this is yesterday, actually, is the first time I've seen this. Do you have a comparison? Because I, I don't really know what the, you look at this, it only has the building permits, the unit, and the fee you're changing it to, but.
Yes.
Doesn't have, list the previous fees. And I can tell you from experience, um, my very first year on the board, my very first meeting, there was an across-the-board increase in fees. Um, at that time I had raised concerns, it's my very first move, um, that some of the fees were 150%, 400% increases.
Oh, sure.
And the concern at the time was that people would stop getting permits. And that, after a year, we found that that was exactly what happened. Um, we lost, I believe it was 200 and some thousand dollars in a two-year period. Um, and we rolled back those fees at that time partially, um, at the, and, and then some of it, I think, was legally, we weren't supposed to have a revenue generating program. And the solicitor at the time recommended that we roll that back as well. So my question is, how long have you looked at this? Um, that we're just, we just got it yesterday and, um, is there an opportunity for us to further review? Madam President, because I haven't had much time to research and look at what the changes were.
Well, let's, uh, Zach answer the question first and then we can, that can be part of the discussion with regard to the amount of time that, um, this was looked into.
Oh, sure, I've been working on this slowly, um, probably since I started here because I noticed that we're losing money on every single application, especially related to building permits. So, um, I did do a redline version for myself to be able to answer questions tonight. So if you have a specific question, I can answer. But I can tell you the building permits in particular, we're breaking even, but we're only charging a $35 administration fee. So the township's only making $35 per permit. However, you have to keep in mind that we have a, um, a lot of time that we still have to process building permits. And we also have to enter them into our system, people call all the time, so it takes a significant amount of time. So I took that into consideration. It's about, I think about a half hour of our time per building permit on average. So that's why I did the $35.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would like to see the comparison.
Sure.
Um, before I make a decision on that. Um, I'm not prepared to make a decision tonight. Because I haven't seen the comparison. This is the first discussion that us as a board is having on this issue, so. Um, and like I said, my initial experience with increasing fees across the board was not a positive one because I watched our fees go down by 200 grand. And, and we had discussed that in a budget meeting, I don't know if you remember Commissioner Connolly at the time. Um, but we did roll them back. Um, I think we can all agree on that. And so without review, I'm sharing the same concerns. And at a time when inflation is through the roof, building materials are through the roof. I mean, we, we witnessed this evening that we only had one contractor bid on a project that we put out for bid. So to me, it's a little concerning and, um, I don't want to price ourselves out of the market. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just respond by saying, these are the, the, covering the costs that the township incurs by having the people that caused the, the cost, um, pay it. Uh, I, I think we might be mixing up a couple of things. We raised the fees before because the department was spending more money than it was bringing in. So to put that in perspective, if the people on this side of the room got a deck and the administrative fees for the deck was $100, but our fees are only 50, then the people on this side of the room that didn't get a deck are subsidizing through their property tax, the other people's deck. So, um, the, the same, uh, process that we had before with Mr. Eline, and it happens periodically. And I, I do know other townships, um, put this on. So I'm, I'm not getting ahead tonight saying that, that it's going to pass or we're not done with the discussion. But, um, we want to have this on so that everybody knows that. But if someone is putting an addition on their house and we have to bring in a third-party inspector and that third-party inspector does it, uh, you know, by the requirements of the law. And they come back and they tell us that these inspections cost, because they're doing it on behalf of the township. These inspections cost $1,500. Again, we, we're billing 1,000 or 750. So there's really nothing in here, um, that's really to, to generate revenue. And I, I do remember the discussion before and I think there was confusion then. The fact that we're getting more money into the codes department where it should be a break even, um, but it hasn't been, unfortunately. Because costs go up quicker than the changes on the piece of paper. So. So, you know, the way I look at it, it's like, do we know when the last time this was?
Was? Seven years ago, 2008.
Okay, so, so that's, that's the time we should have raised it. And then we are in opposition from the board for, for various reasons that we should roll it back. But that's seven years of people who weren't getting the improvement, the addition, the shed, the driveway, all, all of these things. The right to know requests, that means everyone else was paying it. And, and it's, it's starting to get disproportionate. And, you know, my, my conversation with Robert before was that it needed to be updated. Zach just came in to fill the position. And I'm, I'm going to say, it was a priority. It was definitely a priority because the sooner we do it, the sooner we recoup that money. So to say that we might have lost $200,000, that means we had to pay it somehow. So, so if, if his department is losing money, it's actually a bad thing. Because we're still paying the bill with money from, from other people. So, and I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to this, and, and I don't think there's any timing issue. I'm not opposed to Zach giving us his red line. And I think then we can make the, you know, a better case to the public. He gave us the final product. So if, if it's okay with everyone else, I would recommend that the commissioners get the, the actual changes, which, you know, you, you did for a specific reason, so I'm not questioning your work. But you just show everybody what we were charging and what it costs. And, and that, that's really all this is. And I think, you know, we, we could do that, to be honest with you, we could do that on a lot of changes if we, if we redline it. But, I mean, I, again, I didn't, I didn't think that we were at the point that, you know, we needed to see every single change. Zach, I believe went over the highlights of this last night in the public meeting for the planning commission. And they, they weren't supplied a red line either, were they?
The fees resolution?
Yeah.
Oh, we went over the, the text amendment.
The text amendment last night. But, but while you were working on this, I mean, you're going to have the number. So what if we pull this off the agenda for tonight? And then you give all the commissioners the, the red line, you know, what it was and what it is.
Yep.
And I know you had talked to me about the reason for it. And mostly the reason was that's what it costs. And the other thing is, if there was any break in this, it wasn't, it wasn't to charge people more. It was actually Zach went on some of the lower surrounding municipalities. Like, we're not, we're not trying to put this out to, and I get your concern, to stop development or projects. But we can't have the citizens paying for, for other people's projects. So if, if that's okay with everybody, Zach shaking his head yes.
Sure.
Can we just come back next week? And you could probably send this out tomorrow to everybody?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so, so everyone will have a chance to look at it.
Are you making a motion to table?
I make a motion that we table this.
Second?
Okay.
All right, and then by way of discussion, since, since we're here, what, which municipalities did you look at just for the public too?
Every single one that borders Swatara Township.
Thank you.
Sure.
Do you have any further, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Zach, at the street cut permit, something I'd like to see there is, and it might have, we might have to look at on the ordinance side of doing it. But once you cut up so much percent of a road, I think you'd be, you should, whoever cuts the street should be responsible for repaving that street.
Yes.
Not just a street cut permit fee. I mean, you cut 35, 40% of a road, I mean, you could be almost over the yellow line. And then, you know, it's going to create issues obviously come winter and everything else and, and getting sealed. So that, that's something else I'd like you to look at.
In 2020 or 2021, we passed a street, one of those years, we passed a street cut ordinance that attempted to address that.
Yes.
So that's something that if it needs to be revisited and improved, that's, we're fine with that, but that would be a separate.
I do know that Kevin's not here tonight, but I do know that we do require in our ordinance that, that they repave it. I'm not sure if they provide a bond or not, some municipalities do require that, so that might be something to think about.
Yep. But yeah, I know that was something that was a priority when I took over as Public Works, which was highway still then. And that was something that I worked with, the individual that was in that position to, to get passed to.
But yeah, definitely.
Do you recommend for the engineering escrow, putting in some type of language? I, I know you got that it must maintain a thousand balance, but that something triggers to get us right back to that initial balance. You know, especially on the larger projects. I mean, essentially, you know, the initial deposit for a, a non-residential could be, you're looking at 5,000 for engineering, general engineering escrow account?
Yes, so I did speak with the finance director, correctly from Ron Brittany, but there is a mechanism in our new accounting software that now will automatically trigger an invoice if it gets under 1,000.
And take it right back to where it needs to be.
Correct.
And, and then I guess another one is too, since it's obviously tabled, another avenue probably look at is probably a percentage base. You know, more than just the 5,000. I mean, and if I'm wrong, let me know. But if, if I'm about to build a, you know, let's just say a $20 million industrial complex somewhere in Swatara Township, $5,000 is going to be burned through in the first week.
Right.
With engineering fees, right?
And how, how I wrote this is that the, it's an initial $5,000. We then get an actual estimate from our engineer.
Okay.
And that will be at the stormwater and at the general engineering. And then they'll be required to deposit the remaining to make it up to that requirement.
Okay, and, and I think, I think we're right on target. I think some of the confusion was earlier was with the permits, the building permits themselves.
Oh, sure.
And, you know, '24, we did about 390K in building permits. And, I mean, we're just looking at the first quarter going into the second quarter. And we're already at about two, a quarter of a million in, in building permits. So we're, we're right on target. I don't think our fees are going to hinder the growth that the township is going to see. Obviously, being at the planning commission, as you have seen, there's been a lot of plans come forward for residential growth, commercial growth. And I, I intend not to continue just due to the, the low taxes that Swatara Township have. Another thing that we need to look at is, you know, '24, we lowered the budget and your department from about 970,000, almost a million dollars to about 122,000. You're right now on target for about 200, 200,000 for the quarter. So you, you could end up being under, under budget at 800,000 this year. And a lot of discussion, I think, which you put on the record with our discussions since you've been here is, and you can speak a little bit more to this, but when you got here, we had almost a quarter of a million and recoup fees that we need to get from engineers over the years. And so far to date, you've probably got about 125,000 back. And this program here is what you're trying to shore up. So there are no loopholes, there are no gray areas that when you come to Swatara Township as an engineer, the taxpayers are not finishing your project for you because you decided to skip out on the project or not up your escrow. And then, you know, we find out years later, you want another permit. And then now, you know what, you didn't, you didn't close this escrow account out and you still owe the township money. And that's one of the reasons for the public, why now when we say the reduction, it is that make sure that all fees have been satisfied, because now we hold on to that escrow. So between you, the finance department, and Mr. Trafka, and Austin, when he was here trying to get all this through and, and recouping that money, job well done, because I mean, you did it in six months. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
I found, which it's a draft, so I'm not sure if it's actually what was approved, but I found a draft of the street cut ordinance. And it's as per repair of township facility and roads. In the event that four feet or more in width of roadways is disturbed, damaged or excavated during the course of work, the permitee shall have the entire existed paved cartway with milled and overlaid with surface course for a depth of one and one-half inches over the entire limited work. And then it goes into a bunch of other things. So we do have something, but I don't know, which now we've had time to see how that affects the roads.
Sure.
So if it's something that we need to revisit, yeah. So if it's something that needs to be revisited and expanded and, and I know Solicitor Wieland worked on reviewing it. The draft that I'm looking at is the revised copy that was from him. But yeah, so that's, if we need to do that, obviously we're, I think everyone's in favor of that as well.
Commissioner Ellis, I, I think we probably all worked on this with Todd at one time or another. But I'd also recall an incident where, I think it was Lincoln Avenue or one of those areas where we had just paved the road. And then a few months later, or not even a year later, they went, they came back and they, you know, cut up the road and they left it in pretty bad shape. And so I think after that is when we really started discussing a street cut permit. And I do believe, if I'm not mistaken, that there was a timeframe in there. If they did it within a certain timeframe, then they would be responsible for, I think, the full amount or something like that. And if they did it after a certain amount, then they would re, or after a certain timeframe. I think we had it like tiered off, if I recall.
There's, there's, in case of emergency, there's like language in, in the ordinance for that. But I think the road that you're talking about predates me on this board, I'm pretty sure. And so that's, I inherited the, the issue. And that's where the work on, on this name, I don't know what the ordinance number was, but it was 2021.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and I'd like to add, when, when a road's getting paved, the utilities are notified ahead of time to do their work so that they don't come and cut through the new roadway. And I think everybody here remembers when Chambers Hill, which is a state road, was paved.
Yeah.
And then not long after that, dealing with that construction project, utility company started to cut the road and continued cutting, cutting the road. And I will say, I think their, their repairs, you know, ended up being pretty good, so you don't, you don't feel it. But it's still, it, it weakens the road, it, you know, it causes a problem for the residents, it's inconvenient. And I think in that case, someone dropped the ball. They, they could have done that work on the crappy road and got their utilities and pipes and, and whatever they needed to do. But they actually waited until the community was kind of celebrating the smooth ride through Chambers Hill. And if I remember correctly, that actually ended up being a news story.
I think that was a PENDOT issue.
Yes, yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's still affecting our residents and it's a road cut in our, in our township.
Where someone did the project and then they didn't inform the utility and the utility had moved their project to a different time.
Yeah.
It was a mess.
And I think to your point, what you were talking about, Commissioner Zubek, I found a portion that says only excavate and open the amount of a trench that can be backfilled by the end of the day's work, which makes sense too, so that it's not, you know, these big gaping holes. If anyone ever went down Cameron Street while they had those, yeah. So try to prevent stuff like that in our township if, if best we can. All right, well, we have a motion and a second to table, we had lots of discussion. Are we good at this point and then we'll revisit this next week?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that item is tabled and we will revisit the street, I almost said street cut permit, the fees next week. So now we're up to item 12, consideration of replacement bond counsel due to resignation.
Motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. We'll go ahead and open it up for discussion and explanation for the public.
Yeah, this is nothing more, Madam President, than our current bond counsel attorney moves law firms. And it triggered a, a letter to the finance department and this board to notify that our bond counsel, Mr. Horseman, had basically changed law firms. Tim has been with us for some time, obviously. And the letter, if we vote tonight to approve it, essentially will allow those files from the township to transfer to Mr. Horseman's, who's, who's our attorney for bond counsel. At his new law firm, excuse me, should I put that in there?
Yeah, so, I don't know, do we need to, for Steve, do we need to amend the motion to include that language? Or was it just understood that that's the, because there's, on the letter, there's options?
Yeah, the letter gives the board options to choose from. So I would suggest that somebody make a motion specifically picking one of those options and then that can be voted on.
I'll amend my motion just to state that, well, it says aye. So I'd say we choose to continue to be represented by Tim J. Horseman in the matters currently or that have been handled by him, please transfer these files to Eckert Siemens.
Second.
All right, do we have any further discussion with regard to the amended motion?
Are all fees and everything remaining the same?
Yes, we're, we're still essentially under contract with Tim. I'll, I'll review the contract that we initially did. But I mean, if we, essentially, if we don't float another bond, he's not going to do anything with our, any fees. Or the only thing he's handling currently right now, which we've already paid for and still getting advice from, is the train.
Okay, thank you.
Now, obviously, if we would go for another bond or anything else, that would come by way of a contract.
All right, do we have any further discussion at this time? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Just make a note before that motion was. All right, now we are up to item 13, discussion of the forensic audit request for Swatara Township and affiliates.
Yes, last meeting, I made a motion and Commissioner Zubek seconded for forensic audit for Swatara Township, Stormwater, Sewer Authority and all the fire companies. The reason why I made the motion is because I think with everything that's been said over the past few months, I'd like to have everything reviewed and looked at personally. So we have a total transparency of exactly what may have happened, what may have not happened over the years. And if there's something that was wrong, so we can correct it.
For public edification, can you just, I guess, describe to the public what a forensic audit would entail?
From my understanding, it would review all the information, all accounting for the past period of time, which I requested it to be 10 years back up through current.
And it was all the affiliates, correct?
It was exactly what I just said.
I, I would like to make a point of clarification. We went, we discussed further that it was Swatara Township and its entities. I don't know if the word affiliate and entity is interchangeable. However, its entities would include Swatara Township, Stormwater, Sewer, since there is now a shared agreement between them and the fire companies. And I think, well, the motion was to have Mr. Yarzinski come back to the board with recommendations on who would conduct the audit, the forensic audit.
So to my knowledge, Mr. Yarzinski does have information, she's going to present costs. She heard from a few potential entities that, that may be able to conduct something at, at the magnitude of what a forensic audit entails. So I don't know if at this time we should turn it over to her, or does anyone have anything first before we go ahead?
I think, oh wait, I, I have some comments, but we'll hear, I'm, I'm fine with hearing from the finance director with the information that was requested.
So we'll go ahead and turn it over to Finance Director Yarzinski.
Okay, I wrote up, the vote was to have me do all research pertaining to it. So it's all the costs, what it would entail, everything, and I wrote it up. Jen's going to pass it out. While I discuss it in public, because these aren't from all the auditing firms, they're not formal quotes, I'm not going to say all of their names, because if we do end up putting out an RFP or something like that, I don't want to give away their pricing. I'll just make sure you guys all got one. Okay. I'll read, I'll just read the full letter. At the last Board of Commissioners meeting on April 9th, 2025, it was motion by Commissioner Tuckey to have the full forensic audit of the township of the last 10 years, seconded by Commissioner Zubek, adding to include the township authorities, fire stations and affiliates. The commissioners voted unanimously to have me conduct this research pertaining to the full 10-year forensic audit independently. On the morning of Thursday, April 10th, I immediately began discussions with PFM, our financial advisors, on how this process would work and the potential costs that would be involved. We drafted a list of some general costs and we thought to, that we thought to include, that we thought would be included. PFM at this time discussed to me, I would need to make myself completely available for this audit and would have to most likely hire additional staff to keep each of the three entities running with their daily operations while I am tied up with the audit. We also discussed that they mentioned within their previous experience that board members would have to also be willing to make themselves available at any and all times. that board members would have to also be willing to make themselves available at any and all times that the forensic auditors would require them to be. On Friday, April 11th, Commissioner Tuckey came into my office and stated that he did some preliminary research with Commissioner Zubek and requested I look into having Firm A, I'm not, or I guess, I can say ZNA because they are our current auditors, um, Zelenkovsky, Axora, to do, conduct our forensic audit. I gave them a call and that's when I opened the discussion with them regarding the forensic audit and what it would entail using them, since we are current customers. On April 14th, PFM and I completed a potential list of all auditing firms we are planning to get cost estimates from. We also clicked, completed the rest of the, the potential costs, which I will detail below. I also continued conversation with ZNA regarding if they'd be interested in doing our forensic audit and what that overall general cost would be. I already had a meeting scheduled with them for April 21st regarding the township audits. And they told me we could discuss the details of this in person for the forensic audit and how it would work. Here's all the information that I gathered. PFM helped me draft a potential RFP if the board wishes to move forward with this, which I can share if we do decide to go through it after it gets legal advice. They stated that board members should expect to set aside time to be interviewed. I reached out to five auditing firms, ours, current auditors, um, and they quoted us at so far seven figures a year. And it would take over a year to complete all of them. Um, they said typically forensic audits are when you are looking for potential theft or fraud, but they have also been done. And sometimes bringing in affiliates results in lawsuits held up in court. Firm two, they said 400, no more than $475 an hour and their rates include mileage. Firm three suggested that it would be costly and that, but they are not willing to do the audit, just in their experience. They have higher rates. And the other two did not respond. They might if we put out a formal RFP though. This was just people responding, um, casually, I should say, it's not their official quote. Based on PFM's recommendation that we would need more staff, I looked on Indeed and GFOA website for similar positions to mine. And PFM recommended that we should quote at least one per entity, not knowing if they would be able or willing to be in the cost share agreement or if the other members of the cost sharing agreement would want to participate. Um, below I listed the rates for that. You can find them on Indeed or GFOA, it's averaging about 115,000. The other costs that are to be considered is the cost of pulling old documents from banks we no longer use and we're not required to keep by Pennsylvania law. Other banks, uh, we didn't, I, I didn't contact those banks specifically, but the banks that we do use, Worstedown said that they charge pretty extensive costs for this, so we should expect that. Now, some of them might not, I, you know, I didn't want to reach out to them ahead until we knew for sure. But we would also have to get in touch with our old payroll companies and pay for similar information. Lastly, legal costs that we would have to pay to gather the information from the other entities and affiliates as necessary for the forensic audit and for anybody who would take us to court for this information. I'd be happy to investigate anything further that, uh, you guys feel is missing or want me to look deeper into at the board's request or I'll proceed with the RFP, whatever you guys prefer. And I hope that I gathered all the information.
Ms. Yarzinski, I have a question. Um, when you say getting cooperation from affiliates, can you please define what you explain to them as affiliates?
They said, when you say affiliates, it means anybody that you do transactions with. Because in the forensic audit, it would be every single transaction throughout the whole year.
Well, that was not what was specified at the meeting. I knew specifically that the solicitor stated that, like, outside organizations, outside of the township would not be subject to a forensic audit. It would just be the township entities.
Okay, I just wrote down everything. I told PFM we wanted all of the authorities, all the fire stations and any affiliates. And they said, they and the auditors said in their experience, when other neighboring municipalities do say affiliates, they mean anyone they've done transactions with.
Well, we're not specifying affiliates.
I just gathered all the possible information.
So, I mean, I would definitely like to have clarification when the number's based on just the township entities.
And they said, ZNA did say technically, like, the sewer authority, I'm not speaking for them, but other authorities could, don't have to participate if their board chooses not to. Same for Stormwater, so they could be the one. I'm not speaking for them, I'm just saying that could happen, yeah.
But, um, well, if, if that is the case, then, I mean, I would like further clarification on, like, more of a breakdown on township.
Okay.
Um, and then, you know, other township entities.
Okay.
Um, I have some discussion, if it's my turn, I don't know if we're running order. It's okay. Um. Really confused on this because if it's a 10-year audit, uh, 24 wouldn't ready, be ready to be audited yet, I believe, um, at least till we cross the midpoint.
Right.
So, so we're talking about auditing from 23 to 13 without identifying anything that was wrong in past years and spending a million and a half dollars per year to do that going forward? Um, I, I'm, I'm missing something. And then to ask for a forensic audit, audit and say all affiliates, how, how would you audit if you didn't look at all the money that you spent to all the entities? Um, and then we would have to probably go through a, a legal process to get them to respond. Uh, because they're not going to, you know, the township does business with a lot of, a lot of people. And I'm assuming also potentially nonprofits, we have the fire companies that have their own boards. And then we have a board for Stormwater and a board for the sewer authority that are, um, appointed to be independent. So, um, it, it seems like what we were asking for was something really big, not necessarily based on anything. And then we found out that it is really big and it costs a lot of money. But the most disturbing thing in this narrative is that after two commissioners asked to do this and asked the finance director to do it, two days later, you guys came in and suggested a firm to do the work.
Guys didn't come in.
Well, okay, one person came in and it says.
And I think it's a little disingenuous for you to throw out a million and a half, 1.5 million dollars when there's not even a number on here, it said seven figures.
Seven figures, so that's a million. Then if you add up the other numbers, the, the 110, we're going to have to hire a finance, um, we're going to have to hire three employees.
I think you're devising your own narrative is what you're seeking narrative.
No, no, I'm going off of a two-page thing that you requested, 1.5 million dollars. But the problem I have is after you said that the finance director would get information to bring us to this meeting tonight, it says, uh, that there was, Commissioner Tuckey came into my office and stated that he did some preliminary research?
Okay.
Did the preliminary research tell you that the person you suggested is our auditor? So we're going to spend 1.5 million dollars to audit the current auditor? You came in with a name when we were supposed to be independently allowing the staff to, to do it professionally? Um, how, how many things has Mr. Tuckey audited to suggest this firm? But it's our current firm. So we would be giving our current firm 1.5 million dollars worth of work to look at things for past years when we're trying to move forward and make things better without an actual identification of anything that was wrong? You stated because of things you heard. What, tell us what's wrong and then we, we could, we could see what's investigated or if there's something wrong, report it to some authority to investigate it. But, um, that doesn't make any sense to throw out a motion on a Wednesday night that wasn't on the agenda, wasn't talked about, that is very serious and expensive. And then on Friday to come in and say, we should use this firm to do the work that I just made up that should be done. So I, I would love to defer to, uh, Commissioner Tuckey and whatever involvement Commissioner Zubek had in that. I made no suggestions of any firm.
Are we, are we coming up with conspiracy theories now like you do at the county meetings?
I'm reading this. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, actually, I would like to ask about the letter that you were going to send out to every nonprofit organization in the township specifying to them that Commissioner Tuckey and I were going to have them audited. Maybe you can explain that to the township residents? Or, you know, there's no backdoor things going on in your neck of the woods, huh?
Well, if you and Commissioner Tuckey asked to audit everybody, we would only be talking to the ones the township did business with.
Well, I don't really care who we pick.
There was no request to send something to every nonprofit. But, so, so you didn't know the price, you didn't know who would be involved.
No.
But we threw this out.
Never done an audit before.
A couple of weeks ago, we just threw this out. So I, I mean, I, I would like more explanation.
Steelton did one.
No, Steelton did not, Steelton had all types of corruption and they still didn't do a forensic audit. They got rid of the people that were causing the corruption and they're doing an internal audit.
I think we have all types of corruption too.
Well, it sounds like we do, it sounds like we do.
I think it's set to my left.
Yeah, it sounds like we do. Well, I, I wouldn't be so harsh on Commissioner Tuckey, but it sounds like you're right, that he threw out a potential 1.5 million dollar payday to, to somebody that we're, we're already working with. And I give them credit for basically saying that they, they were the auditor and.
I knew you didn't want an audit.
I don't care about an audit from 23, you were the president of the board in 23 and 22.
And you had budgets eight years out of the two compared to the one year I did.
The budgets were fine and you came in two years later and found nothing and, you know, it almost seems like.
I'm not going to argue back and forth.
It seems like the timing of this has to do with, uh, making something up in advance of an election. That's what it seems like to me, exactly.
That letter was definitely making something up in advance of an election.
Yeah, it is.
The one that I told our solicitor, I would, uh, seek legal counsel if you sent out.
I'm done, next, I'm sorry.
So this is not a conspiracy theory or anything else. I asked for that firm because I thought they were the best out there from what I understand. Brittany, and look, honestly, I, when I said that firm, what did you say to me?
I said, that's our current auditors.
And?
And they're the best.
And they have awards showing that they are the best.
There you go.
That's the whole reason I requested that firm.
Who wouldn't want the best, Commissioner Connolly, that's a conspiracy.
That is the whole reason.
If they're the best, why don't we need an audit of what they did?
We didn't know this.
Oh, you didn't know that they did a good job, so you wanted them audited.
You know what, honestly, you're like a five-year-old.
Um, the only thing that I have to add is I just did a quick Google search of what a forensic audit is. And it says it's a detailed examination of an organization's financial records and transactions conducted to identify potential fraud, misconduct or other irregular, irregular, sorry, irregularities. Unlike a regular financial audit, which focuses on verifying the accuracy and completeness of financial statements, a forensic audit delves deeper to uncover fraudulent activities and gather evidence for legal action or to prevent future fraud. So, at the beginning of last year, I believe it was, we did complete an audit, um, that we engaged PFM to do an audit, which is available on township website, you can look at the findings, because we were concerned about the financial shape that the township was in. Um, so we have conducted an audit that audited ZNA. Um, so if the point of a forensic audit is fraud.
I'm not looking to audit our auditor.
If the point of a, that's what would, that's essentially what happens with the forensic audit. That, that's what we did, first of all, that is what we did.
It's, it's, it's a.
We already had PFM look back over this timeframe, we already spent, what, 25,000, 50,000 dollars on an audit within the last, like, year.
They don't do a forensic audit every year.
Correct, but if the point of the forensic audit is to find potential fraud, misconduct or other irregularities, I would like you to share with the board what you think that fraud is, because all of us will like to find it, but we don't want to spend a million dollars, however, like, that's, we, we can find whatever the issue is without spending a million dollars and.
That's fine, between 20, 2020 and 2021, our township was in, lost over 2 million dollars. We were in a 2 million dollar deficit in 2021 and a 2 million dollar deficit in 2022. We had COVID money to mask it, but I would like to know what happened to the 2 million dollars.
Are you saying, I, I just want to, I'm writing down, what, you said 20 and 21, a 2 million dollar deficit?
Yeah, 2020, 2021 and 2022.
Um, from the information that's on the township website.
Report that you referenced.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so our current auditors, which are ZNA, um, when, when you get an audit, what they do is, and Brittany, please correct me if I'm wrong in any of my terminology, so the public understands what's being said, they do and conduct what are called tests. And part of these tests is, um, they'll act for, they'll look for your bank reconciliations, your trial balances, your balance sheets, um, for simplicity, here's a receipt, where is check 1, 2, 3, 4? Go get that check to make sure it matches with the receipts, make sure your PO process is there, make sure your invoices are there and matching everything. And then your general accounting practices, right? Because we have to meet certain general accounting practices, uh, essentially, uh, by the GOFA. So to add to the comments of, uh, President Ellis and Commissioner Zubek, during a forensic audit, the auditors are auditing themselves. And they're doing that for an instance is if they had missed something that had to do with an accounting practice or one of the tests that they say, that they tested, and they didn't point out the, uh, accounting practice, essentially that's a finding. And in that finding, ZNA would be looking at their own findings. But to, to get an understanding, the audit gives somewhat of a broad view. A forensic audit is going to dig into when were those chairs purchases that you were sitting on? And, uh, are any of them, uh, sold? And if they were sold, where's the documentation that they were sold off? And that would encompass 10 years, and that's essentially why. Um, and we go through thousands of transactions a year. And all the thousands of transactions just with checks and the inputs that the finance department do would also have to be reviewed, all the POs, all the invoices. That's why you see the higher figure on a forensic audit versus their, their normal standard audit. Um, I have one question because it was my understanding when we left. Um, I think Commissioner Zubek is right in, uh, her statement where she said she did actually, uh, forensic audit that way. Affiliates was still on the table. But I think Commissioner Zubek pointed out that she wanted no interference from commissioners. So, um, it doesn't say that Commissioner.
There was no interference.
You, you said you didn't want any interference from all of us, that's what you said.
There was no interference.
Well, not from you, I'm, I just want to ask Commissioner Tuckey that question. Because if it's not true, we got problems here.
What are you talking about?
Um, where the finance director said that Commissioner Tuckey came in and requested a certain auditor to do the forensic audit.
Because.
We were, we were not supposed to be part of the process at all. She was supposed to do the work, come back and bring it here.
From my understanding, we were allowed to have suggestions submitted. That's exactly what I did.
That's not what you said.
No.
That's what I did.
You said let staff do it.
Yeah, she said let staff do it and, and no commissioner involved.
Well, you know what, honestly.
And, and I just want to know if that's what, if that was said or, or, or.
I'll tell you what.
Finance Director Zubek is misspeaking and that's fine, if she's misspoken, like, I think we need to deal with it, but, um.
Deal with what?
They're trying to make something out of nothing, just like the county commissary meetings constantly, from meeting to meeting.
Can you give me my time?
I'll tell you what.
And I'll let you reclaim yours.
You can just keep hiding when you want to do an audit.
And I got to ask a couple of questions of the finance director. Um. Firm B, I guess, I'm on the second page because you didn't say any names and I understand why you didn't, um, because these are some reputable firms. Would Firm B equal to the seven figures that you were quoted from the current office, uh, auditors as well for a forensic audit?
Yes.
And when you discuss, uh, right below staffing costs, um, are you requesting that we hire additional staff?
Yes, because I would have to be. Yes, because I would have to be with me or the additional person would have to be with the forensic auditors 100% of the time.
Okay. And how many additional staff are you, okay, I see one. Are, are you, hold on, you're saying one per entity?
Yes. Unless.
So you mean for the township, stormwater, and sewer?
PFM said unless there was a whole training period where I were able to train someone on all three entities before we initiated the forensic audit. It would be a lot for them to walk in and do all three at once to start.
Look, there's no conspiracy, like I said. PFM, they come in last year, and what they said at that podium had me concerned with a lot of issues. Uh, when it, they were talking about the COVID money, they, from memory, they said it wasn't spent right from my memory, from what they said. That's an issue. That's a problem. When they were up there, they also stated about the different things, about how when we had the majority of the board that we conducted, and we were actually coming ahead in 2023, from memory, I believe he said it was almost a million dollars that we cut. I mean, there, there's issues I personally am concerned about from what that gentleman said with the COVID money. There's also, uh, concerns with a lot of the statements that have been made over the past few years by this own board, this board here. So I was not aware of the actual cost of that, but there are concerns that I have with how things have been conducted over the years. So.
Um, Mr. Arzinski, I do have a question. Do you acknowledge that tonight is the first time all of us are seeing this document?
Yes.
With the amounts?
I didn't even leave it that back there.
So no one on this board had any clue how much this was gonna cost?
No.
Thank you. I appreciate that because you know what? No, everybody on this board has the same desire for our township. I don't dispute the fact that we all have the same desire for, to be able to serve our residents.
PFM, I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner Zubek, were you done?
I'm, I'm finished. Thank you.
Prior to the, uh, vote being taken, um, last month, um, the finance committee was already working with PFM, uh, because they did the first five years like this board had instructed, uh, PFM to do. Um, PFM is actually working on the next five because that was essentially part of the original motion. And if, if you remember from that meeting, um, Solicitor Wiley basically said, let them, uh, choose the years that they want to start with, and then we can direct them, uh, again. So PFM is already working on, uh, another financial presentation, um, going back an additional five years. I just want to make that known to the board. I don't know when that presentation is going to be done. That meeting was in March, was it? I think, March, we, March, we had a conference call with them. So I just want to throw that out to the board as well.
Well, I, I would like to know, I mean, one of the things that I had concerns about with the last PFM report is the gentleman that was there acknowledged that he never even talked with me as finance chair about the years that I served as finance chair. And that there were certain things that he wished he had knowledge about. So, um, I don't know how you can do a thorough report without talking to staff that was here at the time, commissioners that were in certain positions at the time. To me, that's not a very thorough job. And he even acknowledged that there were things that he may have had a better insight on if he had done that. So it gives me pause, it gives me concern, and I think that if there is someone continuing to look at our finances, that they do their due diligence and do a little bit, um, more of a deeper delve than just the surface.
He did, they, they did, Commissioner Zubek, they did review, uh, audits, the budgets, and other financial information. And I will agree with, uh, I don't think he talked to any elected official. They just, they essentially, they essentially just asked for documents that related to, uh, budget, uh, expenditures, expenditures, revenues. Um, they asked for our D C, D C E D, um, filings, and then also our audit filings. And essentially what they did was took all that information, which is our financial, uh, information, and then came out with a, what they call, uh, a fi, a financial condition assessment and, uh, what took place over the years. Um, you, you are right in the, uh, way of that they did not talk to any elected officials.
But they didn't talk to certain staff either.
They, they, they strictly, they strictly, yeah, they strictly stayed with the finance director, 100%. Um, if, if, if that is your wish, uh, this go around, I, I instruct the, uh, finance director to have them talk with, uh, additional staff and, uh, elected, elected officials for, um, their next step in their report.
All, all my wish is to have a thorough assessment, but I would also like to see the last audit report that we received from ZNA. Because I know an audit was recently. Were they just recently here?
Um, 2024 is not finished. The D C D one is finished, but the 2023 is the last completed one, yeah. And they did do one for ARPA, but I don't believe that one's online though, which is, uh, what they called the COVID funds.
Well, I, I would like to see those reports.
Isn't the audit online? The audit's online.
Yeah, the audit's online. But the most recent completed one is 23. They're finishing up 24. Yep.
The, the PFM audit is online. I'm looking now to see about ZNA. I'm not, I don't.
No, I think we put the ZNA audit on there too.
Okay. There's, um, I know there are two items for the PFM thing. There's a presentation, the, the screen, or not screenshots, the slideshow that was presented in public as well as 17 pages of findings.
There were many holes in that report though, that we pointed out at the meeting that night.
I don't think we had the 17 pa, I don't remember if we had the 17 pages that evening or if that was something that was.
You had sent it to us, I believe, in an email. You sent something to us.
Yes, I know that I sent at least the, the slides. I don't remember if the 17 pages was completed at that time or if that was something that was still being worked on. That's what I'm saying. But, but it is all available online and it's posted on September 12, 2024. It says PFM Financial Presentation. So that is available for anyone to, um, look up. But that's what, I was just looking to see if I could find the ZNA thing, which I'm not seeing yet, but that doesn't mean that, um, look it in the right place. If it's not on there, we'll get it on there, the, the most recent one that we have, which would be 2023 at this point, not 2024 since that's not completed. So, but again, if you guys can let our finance director know what specific issue, again, it is, like if you have specific instances, any, whatever you have, let her know and we will all work together to find it, but.
Well, I would be more than happy to do that as long as the information is readily available to me.
I think she said that, yeah.
Because there have been times that I've asked for information and it goes a while or I don't get to see it. And I get the feeling that it's, you know, there's not an urgency to provide it.
Um, but the reason that I was saying this again is just because I don't know that any of us had any, like, comprehension of the magnitude of a forensic audit. Um, so, I mean, I, I don't, I personally don't think that that is an appropriate step because we've already done some of what you're asking for already and we're finding out, you know, where things went wrong in budgets and stuff like that through, because all of us had those concerns at the beginning of the year and that's why we moved forward. But just again, keep in mind what this entails. This is something that is of a much larger scale and a much larger price tag. Um, and is it, if you don't have something that you're aware of, that's going to, again, it said that the point of this was for legal findings and legal proceedings. If, if it's just, I don't like your budget, you don't like my budget, if it's just that, then I don't think that a forensic audit is necessary. That's, that's what I'm saying.
Would never be that, no. So it was, a $2 million deficit is a significant change.
Wrongdoing, theft, like that's what it's for. It's for theft. So is that what, what you think?
Well, I don't, I'm not saying it's theft. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna throw stones at, no, I'm not gonna be that.
I'm just, I'm trying to understand.
What, what I'm trying to understand is the same thing we all would like to know is if there's a $2 million loss in revenue in one year, that's a significant change. So I would just like to know what the reasoning for that was, so that if it's something that we need to be aware of, you know.
Absolutely. And I think that's why we made the moves that we did.
Can I, can I answer that question? Um, so, so when, when you say a two, two, $2 million loss, let's, let's, let's.
It's, it's in the PFM report. If you look back at that report.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm following you. I'm following you. And, and this is where you have to somewhat, and I'm not saying you don't understand it because, but I'm just explaining for the public. This is somewhere somewhat where you have to understand the difference of what type of report they're doing. So we just voted in, uh, I want to say six people, right? And if those six people weren't in the budget and we can, we, we just leave our budget just as is, okay? That's 500,000, let's just say that's, for simplicity, that's $500,000 worth of salary. Let's say that is, uh, not in the budget. So when it comes time to compare our budget versus our revenue, we just create a $500,000 loss. Now, if we go back and amend our budget and reflect our budget to that extra $500,000, then we won't have that loss at the end of the year. So that's where you got to be careful on where you say you're looking. And, and I think, I don't know where you were looking at. I think you just said the PFM report. But sometimes that will give you your loss. Now, where you can really see a loss at is if, for simplicity purposes, if you have a million dollar budget and you have a savings account and you got to take another million out of your savings account and it becomes an expenditure, now you have a true million dollar loss. And, and, and in government accounting, you really have to understand that because it's not, it's not the same as a household budget or corporate accounting. You're talking about a QO and cash basis. And, you know, we're going to be on a cash basis all year long. And then when it's reconciled, we're going to go to the QO basis. And that's, that's something that has to be understood. And then on top of that, you know, at the end of the year and every single year, there is a number of journal entries. And like I said, we make thousands of transactions here in our finance department. So there are going to be journal entries when the auditors come in and say, hey, look, this needs to be corrected because it needs to be reflected in, for simplicity, again, '24, even though you purchased it in '25 because the invoice was in '24. So there's a cutoff time. This year, we just so happen, I'll give you an example, this year, we cut the expenses at the beginning of the year. That's it. We didn't drag anything in to '25 from '24. And the auditors would normally allow that until they come in and they tell Brittany, okay, it's time to close out the books. So where you're saying the loss is at, it could be a posted financial loss. But the, the best trigger to look at is your expenses versus your revenue. And then what are you doing with your savings account? And are you, are you pulling out of your savings account or your expenses and your revenues matching?
Commissioner Steele, I am very familiar with government financing. And I looked at the revenue versus expenditures. And it is cut and dry. There's a $2 million loss in revenue. And I stand by my numbers. And I stand by the numbers of our auditors that came in and provided that number. So, I mean, I'm happy that you explained it to the, to the audience and the, you know, the community. But I, I'm just asking a simple question. In 2020, you know, I know there were some things that we did that resulted in a loss of revenue. But even if you add all of that up, it still doesn't equivocate to $2 million in a COVID year. So I, I really don't want to belabor this all night. I think that we, you know, can agree that a seven, you know, figure amount is a lot to digest right now. So I would recommend that we table for the time being until we've had more of an opportunity to really, you know, digest the information that was provided and, um, maybe review some of the audit reports that we're referring to to, tonight. But, um, I, it's a good, it's a legitimate question. And I think that we all want to really educate ourselves on our township budget and dig into the nuts and bolts and, and know what's driving our finances. And, you know, if you look at 2020, $15 million. 2021, $13 million. That's a huge difference. So, thank you.
Okay, I, I just want to be clear. Online, you can look at the treasures report. And the year that we have a problem with, which is $2.2 million taken out of capital reserve, is going to be 2023. Uh, when I, when I left the board, you, you can research this, this is not, anything I say is, is fact here, not conjecture or mixing up the years.
I'll put the charts out.
But when, when I left in 2021, there was $4 million in the capital reserve. When I came back, there was 1.8. So that's your $2.2 million. Commissioner Zubek was the, the president of the board, okay? So in 2024, uh, the budget was done by the people in 2023. We came in and opened the budget to cut the spending. And, um, that's, you know, usually like an oxymoron, government cutting spending, but we, we cut the spending and we tried to recover from the year before. But we weren't recovering from 10 years ago and 12 years ago and 20 years ago. Municipal budgets are one-year budget. And, um, you know, my thought was when, when we raised that capital reserve from 800,000 to 4 million, that we could withstand a bad year. We could withstand, um, you know, troubles in the market. And then we had COVID, but our township was resilient because we don't rely on one thing. We weren't a city that has parking meters or a neighboring municipality that gets, um, money off of tickets to amusement parks. So, so we fared very well. And we, we kept our balance high. Um, so the story about COVID, we survived COVID. What we almost did survive was, uh, '22 and '23. So, so to start, and these are reports that you can get. We, we cut government spending and then tonight, for those who've been here the whole time, we're on a comeback. We were able to hire three police officers tonight. We were able to hire highway workers. I mean, you, you see, your streets are being swept. Things are going really good and we keep the taxes low. Didn't cost you any more money. We were able to manage that. But what we can't survive is this $2.2 million deficit. And I, I agree with Commissioner Zubek. It's there.
It's your 2.2 and I'll show everybody.
She's gonna say it was somebody else's years before. So look online, look at the reports.
Eight consecutive budgets of your budgeting killed us.
And when she says eight consecutive, just to be honest with you.
Or six, it was already six.
Politically, I'm a Democrat. I served on this board with eight Republicans and I, they put me in as the president of the board and then the vice president. No, so it's not political. We had some really good financial people here and we tried, and, and I came on after four consecutive tax increases. Your taxes were lowered one time in, in 20 years and it was when I, I was, was on this board, the president of the board. And we want to keep the taxes low and the services high. And we, we, you know, we have some, some questions too. But I'm not saying it's theft. I think it was just absolutely poor management.
Poor management by you. Great job. Yeah, that's a good point. That's a good point.
By me in '22 and '23 when I was sitting out there. So I was in the audience those years and, um, you know.
Those years? One year? Two years? I'm sorry, two years. But we worked off of the 2022 budget that was yours. So I'm not gonna go back and.
I'm gonna wrap it up. But there's a lot of accusations. Look them up. Don't take my word. Don't take anybody's word. Just, just look it up. It's, it's there. I mean.
Okay, yep. I'll put it out for everybody to see.
Please.
Brittany, if I, uh, I'd like to ask something here. Do we have any past due notices on bills not being paid?
Not to my awareness. Every bill that I have is paid.
That you're aware of? Okay.
If, if there's any that I'm not.
Okay.
Please let me know.
Well, we will. The other question I have. The accounts that we had where we could go in and pick up stuff and have it on the charge account.
Home Depot, you mean?
Oh, I'm just going in, not going to go in detail. Have any of those went to COD because we aren't paying our bills?
The only one that I know that you're talking about with pickup with a charge card is Home Depot and no, not.
Not picked up with a charge card. Did we have accounts set up at different companies or am I mistaken? To where employees could go in, pick, purchase, and they get billed later?
I don't know what, I don't know what vendors we have that with.
Okay, I'll get more information from this again. Because, uh, from my understanding, there are some past due bills not being paid. And I have concern about that. I have concern about over the years with the different budgets. And we will get down to more of a detail. I honestly did not realize it would cost that much to do what I was asking. So it's nice to have that information. I appreciate that. But I do have concerns because the gentleman from PFM was up here and he stated very clearly a lot of issues that he found. And it would have been nice if he would have consulted the other people that were involved at the time to have more of a detailed idea of what was going on or what wasn't going on. So, that's all I have to say. One other thing though. I'm not up here for anything other than trying to help save as much as we can for the tax resident, the residents on taxes. And I'm not here to play games. It's not about politics. It never has been. I, all this stuff that gets tossed around all the time, it's just frustrating. I mean, I, I truly am here for the right reasons and I, I'm just tired of the accusations all the time. That, that's the whole thing. It's just, it's sad. It doesn't need to be this way. It doesn't need to be this way. So, thank you.
Mike, politics is when you decide to come to a public meeting and you, you know that there are late bills, but you don't go to the finance director. That's politics. You're an executive. An executive would walk in the office of the finance director and have a conversation with her and say, do we have late bills? But to come to the public and ask the finance director in a public meeting, do we have late bills? But you don't know what those vendors are, that's politics.
No, I'm not putting others.
There's a difference between, and it's my time, please don't interrupt me. There is a difference between politics, which is theatrical, the theater of it, the punch points to the public to get them riled up, and governance. And what I, I keep consistently asking every single meeting, we don't need I got you moments. We all up here sit and have a consensus that there was a financial problem in Swat Air Township where we had a deficit budget. We can choose whatever year you want to choose, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. I'm with you, okay? We had a deficit. I reported that my day one on this board after I got elected. I reported that. You guys agree with that. So if we all consent to that, if we all agree to that, right? Why don't we come up with the solution together? Instead of coming in here month after month with these catchphrases in this theatrical grandstand political show? We all agree.
I agree with you. You should, you should consult with us and bring us into the process instead of leaving us standing out there. And then you show up and you have someone you want to hire and.
Here's all I ask you to do.
Fee increases.
Here's what I ask you to do. Just don't interrupt me and I'm not going to interrupt you. Give me that respect. We both were elected by the people and we both deserve a voice. You can go right after me. That's all I ask. I ask that of everyone. But this grandstand every single month when we all agree that the township has a financial deficit. It has a structural deficit. Almost every government in Dauphin County has a structural deficit. This is nothing new. So how do you fix that structural deficit, right? Well, what's the plan? And as we executed the plan since January, we came in, the first fix was guess what? We had to cut staff because the previous year, we, we had fourteen million in revenue and we spent eighteen. That's a four million dollar deficit. That's four million, right?
That was.
So we come in with the plan and that's in January and we reopen the budget and we give you a balanced budget. You vote against it. Okay? This year, we come with the same plan, little bit more revenue, eighteen million dollar budget. You vote against it. So if you vote against a budget plan, you vote against fixing the problem. You can't come in here and vote against fixing the budget. And we went through eight budget meetings, I think?
I think it's more like kicking the can down the road.
When we went through eight budget meetings, that's your involvement. They're online, right? And it's arguing back and forth, bickering during the budget meetings. There's your involvement and the public, transparent to the public. You get to see it. You get to hear it. You know the problem. We're talking about the solutions. We're working through the budget, fun by fun, line item by line item. And every department head has to explain to us why they want to make that expenditure. It doesn't get no better than that. And then when we get through the budget meetings again, this year, you vote against it. You vote against it. We are hurting ourselves here. If we do not come together and work together, it's not going to work. We cannot keep doing this to the public.
Then include us in the process.
Let's, let's.
Include us in the process.
Let's work together as we know we should.
Then include us in the process. I think that's great. Let's do that. Let's work together. Don't go out and buy three vehicles without board approval. Don't go out and buy drones without consulting with the members of this board. Don't work behind the scenes to hire people and give them jobs. Include us in the process. In, in fact, make sure people actually come before the board that we're hiring. And that you just didn't go out and hire them just to hire them without our board approval. I love that idea. Let's work together. Include us in the process. I appreciate that if you could. Thank you.
It's just more theatrics.
It's not more theatrics.
It's a request that we've been asking for.
I'm asking for you to work with us. You're up here grandstanding, talking about, oh, what can we do? What can we? You haven't given us a real plan that we can work together with. You've come up with your plan. There was no collaboration on this board. It was you. And that's it. We weren't included. We haven't been included and that's what we've been asking for, for a year and a half. And then when we ask questions, people, certain people want to say, oh, you're complaining or you're not working together. You know, but I wouldn't have to look like I'm pulling teeth if I had answers, if people would work with me. If, if I gave, if, if I was given the same courtesy that I gave people when I was president of the board and I called and asked if everybody was okay with budgets and I tried to work with people. I did, Commissioner Ellis, did I not? I did try to call you and work with you, I did. So you know what?
With regard to budget though, I will point out that like I didn't get the revenues for whichever, I don't remember which year at this point, until the day of, at four o'clock. So that makes it difficult to review the budget.
And nor did I.
Seven.
But, but if they're not available, they're not available, nor, nor did I. But I will tell you this, I worked, okay, okay. And I appreciate that. But I did work with people as much as I possibly could. There has been no inclusion. And I'm telling you, the difference in the meetings? Go back three years, look at the meetings. We had healthy discussion and they were still pretty decent as far as timing. We don't need twenty minutes to answer a question. We just need an answer to the question. I'm not trying to get, to get you. I don't want an I got you. I'm not playing, laying blame on people that they have to get insecure and come up with twenty minutes to explain themselves. I'm not trying to do that. All I want is answers and on inclusion and I agree with that. I want to collaborate. Thank you.
Did I get the resume for the HR when you guys hired the HR rep just two months ago?
You did.
I did?
You did.
We did.
I didn't.
I, I got it. We do, I looked it up. I looked it up.
Is that part of that interview?
No. No, we weren't part of the interview, but we all.
Did we have eight budget meetings that everybody was there?
We had, we had the design, listen, full transparency.
We did.
Commissioner Steele, full transparency.
Okay.
Um, for the sake of discussion, point of order, I'd, I'd, I'd like this to move past. There's no, I think Commissioner.
I, I agree, I agree.
I'm going to say something and we're done.
I mean, when, when you talk about us voting against the budget, I mean, the budget that we had had it to set to where, from memory, I believe, we, we had three police cars in that budget, also a secretary that was requested by the chief at the time, Chief Ryder. And I wasn't for voting for a budget because that was taken out. And, okay, you're, you're saying that the services are okay in this township right now. We're making everything better and we are doing it with less people. I know for a fact, there's a lot of things, and I'm not trying to criticize anyone on here. But there's a lot of things in our township that's not being done that used to be done in a timely manner. I'm not criticizing staff or anyone. But by cutting down, and I, I agree with saving wherever you can. But there, there are things that have been happening. Unfortunately, maybe when someone's being trained a new job quickly because they have to go, get, get things done. There was an issue with stormwater. There was an issue with past due notices when they already paid the bill. And there's unfortunately, there was issues where there was liens against those residents' property. There was, and that's not a got you moment. I'm not here for that.
What years were that? The liens that you're talking about, what years were they?
I'm telling you.
Um, that was actually a few weeks ago that I got a letter and in my email.
And the residents reached out to us with their concerns and it's been brought up plenty of times.
Have twenty-five bills been turned over to, uh, collections?
No bills have been turned over to collections this year yet.
Right. So what are you, what are you talking about?
It's, it's an old bill and I, I turned it over to.
What year?
Okay, look.
Last year.
I have concerns because a fire company ended up getting almost a water shut-off notice. They had three days to pay the bill or it's going to be shut off. There's issues going on in our township. It's not just one or two times. So, and it, it was brought to the attention.
I'm going to, I'm going to go and then we're done.
But the, the only thing I want to say is.
Just three minutes ago, you didn't know who that vendor was.
No, I'm not putting people, putting them out there.
All right, we're, we're going to move on. I'm, I'm going to speak and then we're going to move on. What I want to point out is all of the things that you guys are pointing out as concerns are, are not fraud. That is the point of the forensic audit.
We weren't talking about fraud.
That's what a forensic audit is for.
I'm sorry.
That's my point. That's what a forensic audit is for.
We were responding to Commissioner Steele's statements.
I understand, I understand. And these are things that are about like.
I make a motion for item fourteen on the agenda.
We're, we're, I'm, I'm going to finish. So again, the point of the discussion this evening was for a forensic audit. We are not in a position to move forward with something like that because of the cost, as well as we don't have the infer, like, we, we don't have the instances of what a forensic audit would be for.
I already made my comments.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm making mine now. I've, I've been quiet.
I know.
I, I haven't said anything. So I'm saying what I'm saying and then we're moving on. Um, so again, we're all on the same page. We've already taken the steps that you're asking for with the audit. If you want to contact PFM and ask them questions and do whatever, do that, that's fine. You, everyone is able to do that. But the forensic audit is not the vehicle for, for driving this and figuring out where the issues are. Because again, we, we can't afford to hire additional staff to complete the audit. We can't afford to pay these firms. These exorbitant amounts of money, which one of them's what, four hundred and seventy-five dollars per hour? But we don't know how many, like, hours it would cost. It said over a year of time. So that's, that's not something that we can do. So.
I agree with you.
Again, uh, uh, the reason I put this on the agenda was so that we could have this discussion and all get the information at the same time and talk about the path forward. But basically, the path forward is the path that we've been on with PFM conducting these audits. And whatever information from ZNA is not available on the website as far as past audits, we can get all of, all of what we have up. I have no problem with any of that. Public can take the time to look through them. Again, the PFM audit is available. It just was completed. Uh, I believe the presentation was in September of twenty twenty-four. It hasn't even been a full year. They have additional scope that they're working on now. So we're, we're doing the things that you're asking. That's, that's the point that I'm trying to make. We're do, we're doing that. If we're not agreeing on where the issues lie, that's, that's not the same thing as fraud, which is the reason for a forensic audit. So with that being said, that was only a discussion item. There was no action. That was, that's what it was. So I don't know if, if.
Yeah, Madam President.
That was a good thing for the public to be subjected to, but I felt that that was, you know, we all needed to get the information publicly and then go from there.
Madam President, I call point order. There's a motion on the floor.
So I'm going to go ahead and move on to item fourteen.
Excuse me, real quick, if I may ask? Madam President?
Yes.
Okay, you said PFM, there's a scope. So what are they looking at now?
Again, I, I.
We're, we're going to move on from that. That's a conversation, that's a conver, again, that's a conversation that we can have after this. We've already discussed that and beat it to death. We were moving so nicely through the meeting. I want to get us back on track.
I just ask him one question.
That's fine. That's contact, you can reach out to Brittany for that information. I don't have that. We all voted on the scope. It was in March.
Madam President.
We can reach out to Brittany.
Yeah, and the information was presented in March. Like, it's, you have it, we all have it.
Madam President, may I be recognized?
So we all, we all have it in our emails. Just search PFM. It'll come up in your email so that you can read it, what the scope was. But we're going to go ahead and move on. We're up to item fourteen, approval of Axon Enterprises Inc. TASER quote. So Commissioner Steele has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. By way of discussion, I'm going to go ahead and defer to our superintendent, Stalfer, um, so that he can give an explanation to the public for, for what this is for.
Thank you, Madam President. So our, wow, this is, sorry. I'm not that short.
Even sitting down.
Okay, I think we're good.
I don't know what that is like.
So are. Our, uh, police officers carry tasers, which is a less lethal device we use very frequently. Um, unfortunately, because, uh, we run into situations where folks don't want to be taken into custody. Um, but, uh, the tasers that we have are just, we can't live without them. They really, uh, prevent a lot of injuries, both to suspects and to officers. So the tasers that we have now, that we've had for years, are currently out of warranty. Uh, they're not making parts for them anymore. When our tasers break, there's no way to replace them. So that puts us in a situation where we have to buy completely new tasers. Um, so we had a couple of officers that were assigned to do that research. Um, they did a fantastic job and they got quotes back. We went with a, uh, lesser, uh, expensive package, uh, through Axon or TASER, which will cost, uh, just over twenty-five thousand dollars a year for the next five years.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions at this time? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then just for the board, that, I just forwarded the, um, agenda packet that had the PFM scope. So I sent it to everybody. Um, we're going to go on to item fifteen, approval of quote for Click Lewis Inc., police department vehicle.
Show move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Um, I'll defer to you again, Superintendent Stalfer. Go for it.
Sure. I've spoke with Commissioner Steele about this and I, this is a quote for a vehicle to replace one of our aging, uh, K-nine vehicles. Uh, it's actually the oldest K-nine vehicle in the fleet right now. It's the F-one fifty that we've had for quite some time. And so this vehicle would be to, uh, replace that F-one fifty.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
Um, the F-one fifty, is that just going to be a trade?
Uh, we could potentially maintain that vehicle and use it as our spare K-nine vehicle. We, we do keep a spare K-nine vehicle in the fleet because when our, uh, K-nine trucks go in for service, if they're out for an extended period of time, in order to get the dogs into work, we have to have a spare vehicle. So I think we'd probably maintain that in the fleet as a spare.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Do we have any further discussion or any other questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We are up to item sixteen, approval of Manns Woodward contract.
I make a motion to, uh, move forward with the contract to build a public safety center and a public highway center.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none. There is a plan that is associated with this. Um, is this something that, we'll, we'll, we'll get this up on the website. The, the plan that's on here. So just for the public, we'll, we'll have that for a public inspection. Do we have any further discussion at this time?
I move for a roll, roll call.
Yep. Secretary Savage, can you do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Tuckey?
No.
Commissioner Zubek?
No.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Vice President Steele?
Yes.
President Ellis?
Yes.
All right. So the contract is approved. We're up to consideration of resolution statewide local share grant or assessment grant.
Motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Could someone give an explanation? I don't know who is prepared to do that.
That's the one for, um, uh, vehicles, right? So we put in a grant for, and correct me if I'm wrong, I thought, Chief, excuse me, Superintendent. No, I want to keep calling you Chief. Because we just replaced the K-9, so it's going to be three sedans, but initially it was going to be, uh, two sedans and one K-9.
I believe that's correct.
Three sedans. So that's, that's what that grant is for. Um, and it's, it can cover the cost of basically almost a total outfit. I want to say the price, our, our matching was $12,000 or something out of like 236K. So that's the purchase, uh, three more vehicles. And one of the things that we're working with, with, uh, Mr. Cherry at Dawood is, uh, when that expense, uh, can be covered. So essentially, uh, once they give us a green light that, okay, yeah, we got the grant, um, can we go ahead and obviously we made police car purchases this year, can we use that grant for that? And that's something I didn't get an answer for it back yet, but if not, um, hopefully we get a grant for three vehicles. And then I think we'll do the same thing again in the fall, if I think another one comes out for the same thing.
And just to be clear, the, uh, a lot of the grants sound the same. So here in Dauphin County, we have local share gaming grant. This is a state level, grant for, for this disbursement.
All right. Do we have any further discussion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So that's going to be resolution R-2025-37. We're up to item 18.
Steve, can I motion 18 and 19 together since they're resolutions and, or should they, should be separate?
Separate since they're separate things.
Okay. Motion 18.
Sorry.
All right. And then you could just, I'll have you do a brief explanation for Beau.
Sure, Madam President. The first, uh, that's item number 18, special purpose parking at 3729 Brisbane Street. So we received an application from a resident there requesting a reserved space out on the roadway of Brisbane Street, right in front of his home. Officer Brandon Ryder, uh, conducted the investigation into that and found that the resident met all of the requirements to have that space installed. And he is recommending the installation of that space in front of 3729 Brisbane Street.
Okay. Do we have any questions or discussions? Hearing none. I'm still going to go ahead and call even though Commissioner Steele stepped out. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That's going to be a resolution R-2025-38. That is approved. We're up to 19, um, removal of special purpose parking. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. And then do the same thing.
So this is kind of the reverse of the previous one. Uh, we had some folks move into a home that, uh, we had previously installed a special purpose parking space in front of. Uh, the new residents have no need for that special purpose parking place and they would like to have it removed from in front of their house. And I agree with, uh, their request.
All right. Do we have any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That's going to be a resolution R-2025-39. And we are up to item 20, consideration of ordinances, vehicles and traffic. I'll enter, I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
All right. And then are you able to give the explanation on this one too?
Yeah, I think I understand, uh, what that's about, Madam President. So it's, um, so throughout the year, several different, uh, resolutions were passed concerning traffic. And there comes a point in time when the Board of Commissioners needs to pass all of those into our ordinances. So that's, I believe, what is before you tonight.
Yep. That's, that's exactly what it is. Just so. It's a list of all of the things that we've done so far. Um, and this is codifying them into the ordinance. Thank you.
It catches us up too and we got to do it, uh, remember. That's the new process too, every 180 days.
Yeah, well, this will be a quarterly thing going forward.
Good.
So do we have any discussion at this time? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That's going to be ordinance number O-2025-2. All right. Appointments to boards and commissions. It's on the agenda every meeting. Uh, we have no openings, so I'm going to assume we don't have any appointments. We'll go to item 22, visitors' requests and comments. Again, please come forward, state your name and address as well as write it down. And then you can just try to keep the comments in three minutes.
Joyance Seibert, uh, 799 High Street, Bressler. Just three, three quick, uh, mo, um, things on the comment. First of all, I have, I was employed both in the civil and the government workforce for 54 years and at every step of my life, I had to have a resume. That is something that you spent a lot of time for something that should have not even been discussed. And then number 13, I'm a timekeeper. You spent 57 minutes and 18 seconds on a subject that you tabled. You wonder why people can't.
It was just discussion.
Huh?
It, it wasn't tabled. It was just discussion.
It was a discussion for 57 minutes. You give us three minutes. You guys take 57 minutes to discuss something, you know, that didn't have a, a result. And the third part, I'm hoping that on 24, you keep, it seems like everything you wanted to say was said at number 13. Your comments should be also kept at three minutes or less, just like us.
Noted. Been perfectly fine with that. Do we have any other visitors' requests and comments at this time? All right. I don't see anybody jumping up. Move to item 23, possible stormwater violations. If anyone has any issues with that, you can reach out to the board or, um, our manager, Trafficca, and report those. We're up to 24, commissioners' requests and comments, additional business and correspondence. Commissioner Tuckey.
We're going to have, uh, more detailed, talk about the senior fair next week. But fortunately it went well. We had a lot of seniors and caregivers, seniors attended. And, uh, I appreciate all the staff that helped between the police, the fire, highway, and they, they do a lot with these events, all of them. But the highway department with helping setting up, that's a big facility. There was a lot of work that was needed and they did a great job. There was 104 vendors and fortunately it just keeps growing every year. Awfully proud of what it's doing for the seniors because there's nothing being sold there. There's no one hard, hard selling anything. And that's what I liked about it when we first started it. It's all informational and it's all to try to help them with their lives or help if they need assistance with a assisted living or any other issues that's out there for seniors. So, uh, I'm just grateful that it went as well as it did. And there's a lot of really great comments that we got for feedback, which is awesome. As Mary said, Chambersville Fire Company has their chicken barbecue this Saturday, starting between 10 and 10:30. As soon as it's ready to go, it's going to be going. And I know they're going to sell out quick. Uh, tonight, like I stated, I'm not going to get long-winded. I said enough during the meeting, different parts. I'm not here to do anything I shouldn't be doing. I'm here to do my best that I can for the residents. That's what we've been here for. That's how it's been. I hope, uh, everyone has a nice evening. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you. Commissioner Zubek?
Oh yes, I'm not going to, you know, um, go into too much more detail on anything. I said my, um, statements earlier in the night, but I do want to commend, uh, Commissioner Tuckey as well as the police department and all of our staff. Won a great job on the senior fair. Um, I thought it was an excellent event. Everybody was happy. Um, you know, it, I think this year we had over 500. Um, so that's a great number of residents that we're able to reach out to and, um, and it, and it's all good information that they can take home to their families. So, um, and that's all I have for this evening. I hope everybody has a safe trip home and see you next week.
Thank you. Commissioner Connolly?
Going to try to do the three minutes or less. There we go. Uh, today we were awarded $218,000 by the Dauphin County, uh, Gaming Board. Um, that's a project in, uh, Ivy Ridge Park. Make improvements there. Um, so we, we thank the Dauphin County Commissioners for that. Um, we also found out today that, uh, two people with connections to Swatara Township were named to the gaming board moving forward. Chief Mike Everson is, is going to be on the gaming board and our detective, uh, Tim Chateau, Lieutenant Tim Chateau will be, be on the gaming board. Um, so, uh, we appreciate those, those appointments at the county. Um, attended the senior fair. It was great. Well-attended. Um, had, uh, two grandchildren with me and they actually had a, a place that, uh, helps grandparents, uh, deal with their grandchildren. I was doing pretty good letting them grab any snack they wanted. That was, that was easy. Um, want to thank everybody that came out for the Earth Day cleanup. We hear a lot of times more people complaining about the litter than we have people picking up the litter. Um, we're now, uh, working with enforcement for, for places that litter is coming from dumpsters and businesses and things like that. We, we cracked down on one already. Um, I do want to, uh, touch on it. It was another April event. Easter egg hunt, uh, was moved from outside to inside, very well attended. Couple hundred children, their parents got to do an Easter egg hunt in a dry building on a wet day. They did a course through, through the building here and, uh, that was very good. Um, I want to touch on Coffee with the Cop. 40 and A Club hosted the April Coffee with the Cop. Uh, we had an incredible drone, uh, demonstration from, uh, Mr. Jack Carlacker. He's here in the back of the room. Uh, the next Coffee with the Cop, I think will be announced probably next week by, uh, I always call him Chief Stalfer. He's Superintendent Stalfer. And I, I just want to touch on, um, the, you know, the, the things that we go back and forth on. I think I want to clear something up. We're on different committees and we're entitled to information on that committee. I have public safety and codes, um, the codes down the line. And, um, the thing about saying you're, you're not prepared, you can reach out to the other commissioner on that committee at any time. It, it rarely happens here unless you have overlap or, or you express that concern. So, um, to come in here, week after week and say, uh, or month after month, saying you don't have the information, reach out and get the information. But, but I will say this, um, throwing out a forensic audit and the expense of $1.5 million without really having a purpose, I get that. You're not sure. You didn't know it was going to be $1.5 million. I expect it to be a million. But then to interfere in the process and try to pick one person, um, that, that's kind of beyond me. So, um, I'm, I'm not going to belabor the point and, uh, thank you for everybody that came out tonight. And, uh, last thing I want to say is do your research. Look things up. A mouth can really say anything, but the paperwork and the numbers really aren't going to lie. So, um, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Vice President Steele?
Two minutes and 42 seconds. You are.
I, I.
Good. You got the stuff, Wes?
I was going to hold him to that. Now, uh, thanks everyone that, uh, showed up here and everybody that logged on. Appreciate you. Um, over since our last meeting, uh, we've had what? One CPR save. Um, it was unfortunate just the, yesterday, last night, that we had an incident happen on Dairy Street. But essentially a cop applying a tourniquet to someone, he essentially saved that guy's life. Um, the fire department EMS responded along Chambersville Road for cardiac arrest and it's minor sign that that guy is still alive. Um, so that's a plus as well. Um, I want to thank all the first responders, the police department and staff. Just continue to do what you do. Um, you're headed in the right direction and, and the numbers are beginning to show. Um, and, and don't listen to the background noise. Um, you, you just got to continue the course. Some people can't see the, uh, the end future of what we're trying to do here because you know what? In Swatara Township, when I knocked on doors, there's a lot of people in this township hurt. There's a lot of marginalized people. There's a lot of seniors in this township. They're living paycheck to paycheck just because of costs. And ultimately here, the Stormwater Authority and any other boards, uh, that we sit on, we're trying to keep those costs down. And, and keeping those costs down, it, it creates an affordable living for seniors and marginalized people. So just, just keep that in mind. We're humans. We're no different than you, all five of us sitting up here. There's going to be disagreements, right? But let's do it tactfully. That's all I'm asking. There's an election going on right now. Understandable. But here's what I ask you to do. At least put out facts. Don't put out opinions. Put the facts out. Let the public judge it for what they may. Okay? And lastly, I'll say this. If, if, if there is issues with bills that you know of, this is your platform. You can do what you, what you would like. That's, that's fine. You can bring it to the public whenever you want. What I'm asking you to do is be a responsible elected official. And if that's what you're hearing, no one's going to retaliate against. This is all, we, how is someone going to get retaliated against because they told you there's a late bill and you go to finance director and say, hey, is PP and L late for this, this place? What, what retaliatory can you get from saying a bill's late? So what I'm asking you is if there are bills unpaid that you know of, go to the finance director and have a conversation. If they're not getting addressed, bring them to the committee chair. If they're still not getting addressed, which they will, take them to the president of board. That's the way we operate. We operate by committee, but I'm not going to belabor you either. I appreciate you for coming out and logging on with us and everybody have a safe drive home and a good night.
Thank you. I'm usually short anyway, so I'll, I'll keep that trend. Um, I want to say thank you to everyone, uh, that participated or facilitated the events that we had last month, Earth Day Cleanup, the Egg Hunt, the Senior Fair. They were all great events, all well-attended, um, and a great time for everyone. Student Government Day is next Wednesday. Um, is, is the, we, it was named in honor of a former commissioner, uh, Richard Bowder. He began the program, I want to say in the seventies or late or mid, early eighties. Late seventies, early eighties, somewhere in that range. So the reason that Swatara Township participates in Student Government Day is because of, um, Richard Bowder, who was a teacher at Swatara, uh, junior high then, middle school now. Um, so we'll have kids with us next week. I just want to put that out there and then, you know, hopefully the conduct of all of the adults can match, which I, again, I think, I think we did relatively well this evening, um, with conduct. So, uh, I appreciate everyone for being respectful. And then I'm sure everyone's going to jump on on this one, but I want to wish all of the mothers and mother figures a happy Mother's Day. Uh, Mother's Day is on Sunday, so, uh, enjoy time with family if you can. And, um, I hope everyone has a nice day. I hope the weather is cooperative, um, and that everyone's able to spend time, um, with people that they love. And with that being said, I want to thank everyone that takes the time to be at these meetings. Um, thank everyone that takes the time to watch these and I hope everyone gets home safely. So with that, I will go ahead and entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 9:39.